To the Tuesday, March 29th, meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, we will start, as is our custom, with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask Steve Alms if he would lead us in the pledge.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisor Tissier?
Here.
Supervisor Hill?
Here.
Supervisor Jacobs-Gibson?
Present.
Supervisor Church?
Here.
President Gordon?
Here. Record will show that all members of the board are present. First item on our agenda is actually the setting of today's agenda. And first, to see if there are any items that are presently on our consent calendar that folks would like to move to the regular. And I believe we need to move item number 26, as we have some speakers on that item. And then if there are any items on regular to be moved to consent.
Mr. President, I would suggest we move item number six to consent.
And county managers advised me that the item number eight, you need that continued to April 26th?
That's correct, Mr. President.
So with those...
Mr. President, we would also ask that the board consider one other change this morning, which would require a two-thirds vote. There's an item that has come up since the agenda was posted concerning the need for a closed session on negotiations with the DSA negotiator. The item should take about five minutes and can be scheduled during the course of the meeting if there's a break at the board's convenience, if you so desire.
Okay.
I'll move adding that item to the agenda.
Second.
Let's take a separate vote on that. And I think we can do that by voice. Vote all those in favor of adding that item to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. And now I'll need a motion on the setting of agenda, including that item that we added.
Show move.
Second.
Okay. The motion is to adopt the agenda with the additional closed session item added. Item number six moves to consent, and item number 26 moves to the regular agenda. The...you know what, I forgot one. Item 16 needs to be continued also, so could we amend that motion?
Yes.
Show move.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the agenda. And Ashneet, if we could have a roll call, roll call vote number one, please.
Supervisor Church?
Aye.
Supervisor Hill?
Aye.
President Gordon?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacobs-Gibson?
Aye.
Supervisor Tissier?
Aye.
The agenda has been adopted. The next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items that are not on today's agenda. And let me first call on Louis Calabro. Supervisors will be reconvened to deal with the item that was time set for 10 o'clock, which is a further review of the MidCoast Local Coastal Program. The board has had three public meetings on this item. The first was an overview from staff, and in two prior meetings, we have reviewed specific task elements that were developed out of a process in the community and vetted through our planning commission and come to the board now as recommendations from the planning commission. Today, the board will hear a final set of recommendations from the planning commission. There'll be a staff presentation on this matter. That will then be followed by an open public hearing and an opportunity for public comment. The...I would announce that at this point, if you want to speak during the public comment, we do need you to, at this point, have completed a speaker card. If we do not...cards that they're not in at this point, we don't have them, they will not be called, and those folks will not be speaking today. We got yours in time, Paul. Anyone else? We will be allotting for each speaker a maximum of two minutes. There are presently roughly 90 speakers, and we will anticipate, therefore, that the board will take a break at noon for lunch, and we will continue the hearing, most likely at 1:00. We'll watch the time as we go through here and be able to give you more information on that. It also means that if you can be briefer than two minutes, we may get through more folks before we take a lunch break. Also want to advise you that the...should the board choose to take action following the public hearing, any action that the board takes today is of a tentative nature. The board will be convening at a later date to review items that have not yet been decided and that are pending, and to review the total package of proposals. We have a further public hearing scheduled for April 26th, and my understanding is that the staff will probably not be ready at that point with all of the information that the board might need to consider. And I...following the close of the public hearing, I've got some thoughts that I want to share with my colleagues about how we might best use the time that's been set aside on the 26th. Having said that, we will ask for a staff presentation, and I believe that George Bergman, who has been handling this project from our planning department, will walk us through the set of issues that come to us from the planning commission. George?
(Audio cut off.) After the study session, this is the third public hearing your board has held to consider the MidCoast LCP Update Project. The eight topics being covered today are shown on the screen, and these are the annual limit on new residential development, future use of the Caltrans Devil Slide Bypass property, providing pedestrian improvements on Highway 1, updating MidCoast Trails policies, evaluation of LCP tasks that have been assigned to the county by the LCP, also an item related to whether certain coastal act sections should be codified as LCP policy, and resolving LCP policy conflicts and ambiguous provisions that are in the current document, and finally, a consideration of the MidCoast Design Review Glossary. Today, I plan to briefly overview each of these. The first topic involves the annual limit on residential development, the residential units, and this is...this would be the maximum number of new housing units built each year in the MidCoast. Currently, the LCP limits residential growth to 125 units a year. This is to ensure the residential development occurs gradually and that residential development does not overburden the infrastructure nor disrupt the quality of life in the community. Although the existing limit is 125 units per year, the actual number of new units built over the past 20-plus years since the LCP was initially certified has averaged 52 units a year. So to restate, the legislative limit or the statute limit on number of new units each year is 125. Our experience over the past 20-plus years has yielded an average of 52 units per year, which is less than half of what would be allowed. The alternatives that have been discussed for this topic are shown on the screen, and I'll briefly go over these. The first is to maintain the existing limit, the status quo, and that would be of 125 units a year. With this alternative, MidCoast build-out would occur...would not occur for at least 19 years. The second alternative anticipates that all development in the MidCoast would occur in the next 20 years, i.e. a 20-year plan, and this...if this alternative was adopted, it would lower the annual limit to 82 units a year, which would be a 34% decrease. The third alternative reflects the actual historic rate of development, as I indicated, 52 units a year, and it would lower the limit from 125 to 52 units a year, a 58% increase, and build-out would not occur for at least 47 years. The fourth approach reflects...excuse me, the fourth alternative reflects the approaches taken by the city of Half Moon Bay, and this would lower the limit to allow for only a 1% growth increase each year. For the MidCoast, this would equate to 40 units in 2005, but as the community would develop, that number would go up. But if we applied this alternative now, it'd be 40 units, which would be a 68% decrease from 125, and build-out would not occur for at least 63 years. Finally, the fifth alternative that was considered before the planning commission, this reflects ABAG's projected household growth rate for 2000 through 2020, and with this alternative, the limit would be lowered from 125 to 30 units each year, or a 76% decrease, and build-out would not occur for at least 82 years. At the...excuse me, at the planning commission meeting, the staff recommendation was either to lower the growth rate limit to 82 units a year, that is, the 30-year build-out alternative, or to lower it to 52 units a year, which is the historic rate alternative. And by that recommendation, it would imply that staff would support a lowering anywhere between that as well. So basically, 52 to 82. Due chiefly to existing infrastructural constraints in the MidCoast, namely water and roadway capacity, the planning commission recommends that your board lower the growth rate limit to 1% of the MidCoast population each year, but as the community grows, the annual limit could never exceed 52 units in a year. So basically, you start at 1%, which I indicated would be 40. With this alternative...excuse me, with this recommendation of the planning commission, that number would increase as the community increases, but still maintain the 1% increase each year, up to 52 units. When 1% is over 52 units, there'd be a cap, and the maximum amount would be 52 units. This is a variant of the Half Moon Bay approach, but it's closest to that alternative. And the planning commission also recommends that, in addition to the 1% growth each year, that that annual allotment be divided among the four MidCoast communities according to the relative number of vacant parcels. What this means is that if we take this year, for example, if this law...if this rule was in effect this year, there'd be 40 units allowed for the MidCoast. What the planning commission is recommending is that we don't just stop at 40 and say the 40 can be used anywhere in the MidCoast, as we currently have. What the planning commission is recommending is that the 40 must be distributed amongst the communities, and that'd be like a sub-alotment for each community. So of the 40, Moss Beach would get eight units, El Granada would get 12 units, Miramar...I got this...excuse me, Montero would get eight units, Moss Beach 12 units, El Granada 16 units, and Miramar 4 units. A way to, I think, understand this would be to recognize that you have...what the planning commission is recommending is basically a two-step process. There's...the first one is, your board would be determining which...what the annual limit would be. Do you want to maintain 125 or some other number? And then the next question your board would be asking is, do you want to have a provision that distributes it amongst the community, amongst the individual communities, or do you want to have it that that number can be used anywhere in the MidCoast, as it currently is? The planning commission's intent for distributing the units is to present...to prevent a situation where all new construction would be occurring in just one or two communities in any given year, and this is a...is somewhat of a real concern because there are times when water and sewer are only available in one or two communities, and as a response, all of the construction is occurring there. At this point, I'd like to note that in February, your board asked us to contact the principal MidCoast Water and Transportation Agencies to request that they describe their plans to serve the permitted...the LCP's permitted development at build-out. We have done this. We contacted each of the two water supply agencies and districts and the Transportation Authority. And in response, the Cosi County Water District indicated that it believes it will have sufficient water supplies to satisfy MidCoast build-out demands. Likewise, the Montero Water and Sanitary District indicated that its intent is to provide water to all users in its area at build-out, and both these agencies accompanied in their letters a list of existing and future projects that would contribute to meeting this need at build-out. In addition, the Transportation Authority reported on future road projects that affect the MidCoast, including shoulder widening on Highway 92 and curve corrections and improvements on Highway 91 and 92, both of which would occur before the end of 2008. Also, the Transportation Authority indicated that, beginning in 2009, there are plans for unspecified safety and operational improvements on Highway 1 and 92, both in Half Moon Bay and beside the unincorporated MidCoast. Now to a different topic. The next topic relates to the future use of the Caltrans-owned Devil Slide Bypass property. About 30 years ago, Caltrans purchased a swath of land crossing the MidCoast and much of the northern part of the coastal zone from about Moss Beach across from the Half Moon Bay Airport up to Pacifica. And this corridor was to be used as a new roadway that would bypass the landslide-prone Devil Slide area. And this bypass corridor is shown on the screen. There's quite a few things shown on the screen. I'll trace it. It's...this was the corridor of land that was purchased by Caltrans in the '70s for the purpose of the bypass. Recently, Caltrans conveyed the bypass land north of Montero to California State Parks. This would be this portion here. And also, the...the portion of the bypass that includes its southern reach from Half Moon Bay Airport up to the subdivided area was purchased by Post some time ago. I'm not sure the exact date for use in farming, because this is prime land right here. The remaining area that continues to be owned by Caltrans is this stretch right here, which goes through the subdivided area, as I'll show you...oh, before I close on this, the bypass as an alternative roadway was replaced in 1996, 1997 by a proposal for a tunnel, and that the use of that land as above-ground roadway was abandoned, hence it's considered surplus by Caltrans. The tunnel which would bypass Devil Slide is shown in orange, and that would be...the alignment for the tunnel would be the...which is shown with...the area that I'm highlighting. The central part would actually be the tunnel and then the approach roads on either side. So that's the alignment for the tunnel, and that deemed obsolete, the bypass alignment. So the only portion of the original bypass alignment owned by Caltrans today is the area that crosses the MidCoast primarily through the backside of Moss Beach and Montero. And the land use and zoning designations of this section are shown on the screen, basically...actually the land use...actually, both are. And I'm going to go over those with you. This area is almost entirely comprised of subdivided substandard lots. This was an area Caltrans purchased right over the...similar to what's on either side, which would be the products of the original subdivisions that occurred in the early 1900s. Here, I think the typical substandard lot is about 3,000 square feet. The areas that we're focusing on, you see the different designations, but the areas that we're focusing on are the three areas that are currently designated in the general plan for residential use. There are various designations in this area. The two others are open space and public recreation, but there are three portions of this bypass property that are designated for residential. As a means to protect the bypass property for low-intensity recreational land uses, the planning commission recommends that your board...and I'll show this on the next slide, that your board change the designation of those three areas that are currently designated residential to open space, and that you correspondingly rezone these properties to COSC, the Community Open Space Conservation Zoning District. Secondly, the commission recommends that your board amend LCP policies to promote future use of the bypass property for low-intensity recreational uses and identify a trail on it. Finally, the commission recommends that your board encourage Caltrans to voluntarily merge the entire property into one holding, and that encourage Caltrans to convey or sell the land to a public agency. So these are the...this is the planning commission recommendation for this portion of land. In terms of the big picture, it's to indicate that your long-range plan is not residential for portions of the bypass, and that your long-range plan is for low-intensity recreation or open space uses, and the planning commission's recommendation embodies that. The next topic that I'm going to be discussing relates to Highway 1 pedestrian improvements, particularly since the existing Highway 1 right-of-way is sufficiently wide enough to accommodate a multipurpose trail. Also, in recent years, there have been community discussions, many hosted by the Park and Rec Department or Section...Division, about improving safety along Highway 1 with grade-separated pedestrian crossings at specific Highway 1 locations. So in this regard, the planning commission recommends the two proposals shown on the screen. One is to add an LCP policy that promotes coordination with Caltrans in developing a Highway 1 parallel trail and/or above or below ground pedestrian crossings. And secondly, the commission recommends that your board approve conditioning future Highway 1 improvement projects to require that Caltrans provide pedestrian access. The next topic relates to updating the LCP trail plan, specifically those related to the coastal trail. The coastal trail is a partially completed route that ultimately would connect numerous parks and beaches as a continuous path the length of the coast. Within the MidCoast, the coastal trail is shown...well, basically, the Coastal Conservancy has been charged at the state level to delineate and coordinate the development of the coastal trail, and there's a generalized delineation on the screen of the coastal trail for the area of the MidCoast that would connect Montero State Beach with the city of Half Moon The Conservancy's more detailed mapping of the trail for the section between El Granada and Montero is also shown on the screen, and it shows existing and proposed segments and where improvements are needed. In addition to the coastal trail, the LCP also includes policies that list primary trails and acknowledge the role of trail providing agencies. These policies have not been updated since 1980, and they thereby predate the current county trails plan. They predate the GGNRA's expansion into San Mateo County, and also include names of trails that don't currently exist or go by different names. With all that in mind, the planning commission recommends that your board support and facilitate the state Coastal Conservancy's effort in coordinating the delineation development of the coastal trail, and that you revise LCP policy to update the trails' policies, particularly trail names and trail descriptions, give the most current name and delineation, and also indicate the role of trail providing agencies, as I indicated. GGNRA and also the Harbor District has done some...quite a bit of trail work that isn't really acknowledged in the LCP at present. And the finals...the final graphic kind of collapses together the remaining topics, and I'll go over those very briefly. The next topic, which is the first bullet, examines how well the county has completed tasks that have been assigned to it by the LCP. These tasks usually are typically follow-up tasks, such as monitoring or reporting on LCP implementation and coordinating with other agencies. On balance, we believe, and the planning commission agreed, that the county has effectively completed most of the tasks that have been assigned to it. However, there are several tasks where the county has only partially completed these, and as such, the planning commission recommends that your board direct us to complete these tasks in a timely manner. These include that we promptly record a notice of violation as soon as we discover illegal parcels that have been created. We also require public agencies to submit five-year capital improvement plans. I think our last effort of requesting water information at build-out is a first step in that direction. And another task is that we coordinate with SAM Trans in planning a park and ride facility, and that we also reestablish the Coastal Access Acquisition Fund. These are some of the tasks that we have partially completed, and the recommendation is that we do complete it. The next topic relates to whether the Coastal Act should be incorporated into the LCP. What this means is, in addition to our body of LCP policies, also have a body of Coastal Act sections. The Coastal Act is California's primary coastal planning document, and the county LCP is the local equivalent of the Coastal Act. In 1980, the county LCP was certified by the Coastal Commission as conforming with the Coastal Act, as being consistent with the Coastal Act. It has been suggested that the Coastal Act be codified as LCP policy. We evaluated this option and believe that it would not be a good idea to do this, since the existing LCP policies conform with the Coastal Act, and if you incorporate Coastal Act sections into this body of law, you would create a redundancy and the problems that go with redundancies. The planning commission agreed, and as such recommends, against codifying Coastal Act as LCP policy. However, the planning commission did identify one Coastal Act provision that could improve LCP administration. Specifically, this section provides guidance when resolving conflicts between two policies that appear to be working against each other, and it calls for an approach where the most...that is most protective of coastal resources. Accordingly, the planning commission recommends that your board enact this new...enact a new policy that clearly states that conflicts be resolved in a manner most protective of significant coastal resources. The next and second-to-last topic is sort of a cleanup exercise. It's housekeeping. It calls for correcting errors, eliminating policy conflicts, and clarifying ambiguous provisions in the existing LCP. We went over in detail with the...all of these with the planning commission and resolved all of the issues that were related to that. And finally, the last topic before you today is...relates to a proposed glossary for the new MidCoast Design Review Standards. In terms of background, last April, your board approved new standards for...new design review standards for residential development in the MidCoast. Subsequently, our staff and the Cosi Design Review Committee have worked together. We've collaborated on a glossary that provides definitions to the specialized and applicable terms that are used in the design review standards. And as such, the planning commission recommends that your board adopt the proposed glossary. So that would complete my staff presentation, and our recommendation, as has been in the previous two meetings, is that today, your board take tentative action on the plan...on the recommendations from...that are before you today. So that would conclude my presentation.
Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions from members of the board for George? Supervisor Hill?
Thank you, Mr. President. One quick question on the bypass property. Is there any development on that property at all today?
My understanding is that there's just one house that is being rented, and the rent payments go to Caltrans. That's my understanding, is it's just one relic house or leftover house.
We'll open the public hearing. I have 84 speakers. Everyone will be given a maximum of two minutes. I assure you that everyone present today will appreciate if you use less than your two minutes, if you can. The...I'm going to call two at a time, so that the second person can be ready to speak immediately after the first, to keep this moving quickly. Our first speaker will be Alan Harris, to be followed by Avon McClure.
Thank you, President Gordon and other members of the board. I live in Moss Beach now for 30 years, within a block of the ocean all of that time, and it seems to me that the local coastal plan is deficient in one major area, which is the issuance of a categorical exemption for a special project. We saw that abuse when the categorical exemption was issued to the Columbia Pictures in late December, and as a result, the Fitzgerald Reserve has been rather trashed. And I would ask that the provisions of the local coastal plan be significantly strengthened so as to prevent this type of categorical...this issuance of a categorical exemption in this manner. When I saw the permit, there were 15 special conditions on that permit, and a court in Southern California found that issuance of those types of mitigations was an... was an admission by the county that the categorical exemption should not have been issued, that a categorical exemption requires that there be no possibility of damage to the sensitive environment. And by making those special conditions, they found, the appellate court found that there was in fact an admission by the county that damage would occur, and they deemed the exemption illegal. This is basically what happened, but there was no time for review by the county or the public of the activity. So, I would ask that a much higher standard be issued when a categorical exemption is issued in a sensitive area such as the reserve or near the coast. And one would be legal. And I've provided you with an attorney that I have retained to give me the laws and so forth pertaining to this, and I hope you will take a look at it. I would ask you in addition to please take a look at prohibiting, just flat-out prohibiting commercial use of the areas of the coast that are very sensitive, such as the reserve.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Avon McClure, to be followed by Gail Erickson.
Avon McClure for Sierra Club, Loma Prieta's chapter. The Sierra Club has long been involved in helping the residents of the San Mateo Coast strike a balance between their priceless environment and the need for communities to maintain their economic viability. The current LCP update process affords the coastal residents an important opportunity to engage directly with this challenge. We encourage a strong stand in support of growth rate limits and increased open space. And as a personal aside, as a lifelong resident of this county and as a worker within the construction industry for over 43 years, I strongly, strongly encourage you to support the growth limit.
Thank you. Gail Erickson, to be followed by Jim Washington.
Thank you very much for taking this time. My name's Gail Erickson, and I live in El Granada. And I'm here today to really encourage you to accept the recommendations of the Planning Commission, but also specifically the 1% growth rate limiting to 52 units a year. I think that sometimes you will be asked to increase the development numbers because people are saying that that's the only way we're going to get affordable housing. But I'll tell you, that is not true. And I think that you, I don't want anyone to be misled by thinking that the smaller, smaller lots, more housing is going to mean it's going to be less expensive. The direction is absolutely going in a different, the opposite direction. Things are getting more expensive. And I would invite you to come and visit with me, and I'll show you some things that are being built today on some substandard lots in El Granada, going for over $750,000. Not exactly affordable. And also, I really encourage you to rezone the Caltrans property now so that could be open space. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Jim Washington, to be followed by Sandy Emerson.
Good morning. I was born in Sharp Park, north of the Slide. I've lived on the coast for 61 years, and I'm here to represent my family's opinions. I'll apologize if emotion overtakes me. It's a very sensitive issue for us. My family is deeply concerned that Highway One in the mid-coast region continues to be extremely unsafe for our children. Our son, David, was killed near the intersection of 14th Street and Highway One, Montero, nine years ago, while riding his bicycle from Montero to Moss Beach. A parallel trail for pedestrians and bicyclists, as identified in paragraph three, would have taken him away from the shoulder of Highway One, where he was struck by two cars in speeds of excess of 50 miles an hour. Please do everything possible to prevent the loss of another family's child. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Emerson, to be followed by Chris Vogel.
Good morning. I'm Sandy Emerson of El Granada, former member of the Midcoast Community Council and currently on the Board of Midcoast Parklands that helps take care of Quarry Park. I'm speaking in support of pedestrian and bicycle improvements, the parallel trail to Highway One, and for rezoning the right-of-way to open space. And I believe that the two projects to improve pedestrian and bicycle access could be potentially related when we're trying to find safe access from the south to the abandoned roadway after the tunnel is constructed. I ride my bicycle all the time, and anything that could enable me and other bicyclists to use bicycle for transportation and shopping rather than adding cars to the road should be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Vogel, to be followed by Lyndell Erb.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of Green Belt Alliance. I live in El Granada, and I believe that establishing a consistent and limited growth rate for the mid-coast is vital. And one of the issues to consider is ensuring that affordable housing be included in any development now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyndell Erb, to be followed by Claude Windell.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Lyndell Erb. I'm here representing the Equestrian Trail Riders Action Committee. We are very much in support of rezoning the bypass to open space. And also, I wish to speak in terms of the Coastal Trail. The Coastal Trail is publicized as a multi-use trail, and as equestrians, we would really like to be able to use this trail, but there are a great number of areas of it that are inaccessible to horsemen. It's either been paved or curbed in such a way that the equestrian use of it is unsafe. And I would really like the board to consider including the equestrians into the planning process. We are a small user group, but we do really enjoy using the trails, and I think that multi-use trails should be multi-use trails. And, thank you.
Thank you. Claude Windell, to be followed by Bob Mitten.
Good morning. My name is Claude Windell. I'm a resident of Montero for the last 27 years. I have four children, three of them live on the coast currently, and I'm also a real estate agent for the past eight years. And I'm here to represent all those people's rights as it pertains to building on their property. And obviously, what I want to do is talk to you about not just leaving the status quo regarding the growth limitation. I think it's pretty self-evident that there needs to be no more obstacles. I've been here before, your board, in the past, trying to protect people's rights to build on their property. The, the infrastructure that was spoken about is the primary inhibitor to growth over there. That's why you're not seeing more than 50 homes. I'm involved in a lot of these transactions, and there is no water in Moss Beach, so giving them eight or 10 permits isn't going to do them any good. There is no aquifer in Moss Beach. The water company isn't providing connections there. Montero, there is an alternative to the wells, but that's becoming increasingly difficult to do. Also, I might point out to you, since I do sell real estate, that at any one time, 18 months ago, there were up to 70 or 100 lots for sale, and in those 70 or 100 lots, maybe five or six were viable, buildable parcels. Today, that's about half. I just recently did some transactions, and the, the only place, as somebody has pointed out, is El Granada. They can still get water. They can't get it from the district because they're not selling water connections. Those are being purchased for $30,000. So, the net of what I want to say to you is that by putting a 1% growth limit, you're just adding another obstacle that makes somebody who has paid a lot of money for their lot or has had a lot for a long time and has been planning their home there exceedingly more difficult. It's not only an emotional issue for those folks, it's a quality of life issue, and also it's a financial burden for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Mitten, to be followed by Rick Lopez.
President Gordon, members of the board, my name's Bob Mitten. Coming to you to speak about the 1% growth limit and how we oppose that. The unintended, or perhaps intended, consequences of adopting a 1% growth limit on the mid-coast will be that 12 families will be unable to have an opportunity to live on the coast. 12 families, a 1% growth limit limits it from 40 down, from 52 down to 40. We don't necessarily see where the science behind this limit is either. It's not clear why it's been proposed. Understandably, there's concern about infrastructure, but as Supervisor Church pointed out, infrastructure is a service bureau, not a planning department. It is also, as President Gordon found out last night, and Mr. Windell just pointed out, building a home on the coast is a daunting task to start with. We don't need more layers of bureaucracy on this. To me, when 80, over 80% of Bay Area families are unable to afford the median-level house, it seems unconscionable to deny more families the right to build a life on the coast, coast side. This amounts to me, it seems to me that this is nimbyism at its worst. Punishing families who want to build a home and a life on the coast side seems unreasonable, and we ask the board to deny this short-sighted and overly restrictive 1% growth limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Lopez, to be followed by Michael Martin.
Hi, I'm Rick Lopez. I currently live in Montero and here to address the county's 1% growth rate proposal. The proposal to limit growth rate on the mid-coast to 1% of the population is arbitrary and restrictive, especially considering we are in the middle of a housing crisis. A 1% growth limit would only serve as another roadblock to the creation of more needed housing. Families are being forced to move out of the area because of such short-sighted policies. These are young people who have chosen important community positions, such as firefighters and policemen and women. While we disagree with the Planning's Commission, with the Planning Commission's proposed restriction to 1%, we do agree with the recommendation to exempt second units, affordable housing sites, mixed-use units with caretaker quarters in Princeton. While there are some who feel if you don't have enough money to afford the inflated home prices here, then you can move somewhere else, we don't feel that's a solution or even an appropriate attitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Martin, to be followed by William DeRoe.
Good morning. I'm Michael Martin. I've been on the coast for 22 years. I'm here to encourage you, please don't accept the formula-based growth. I, I'm, like my predecessor, I, I think the status quo is fine. We're, we're not building even half of what we're allowed to build. It's extraordinarily difficult to build on the coast right now for anybody. It's, there's no services available in Moss Beach or Montero to speak of. Yes, that will concentrate more building in El Granada, but the formula that they've done is a disaster in Half Moon Bay. It's extraordinarily complex, it's punitive, it's political, and we have lawsuits in Half Moon Bay as a result of this ill-thought-out, complex formula, which, as you've heard again and again, lads, adds layer after layer after layer of complexity to try and build a house. I'm heartened to hear that your own Planning Commission wants to stay away from more complex, more ambiguous things. I think that the current rate of growth will allow people to plan. We have a 45% of the maximum reduced growth rate right now at 52 average. I'd like to see it stay that way and allow people to build on their property that they've paid their taxes for for so long. Thank you.
Thank you. William DeRoe, followed by Christina Lee.
My name is Bill DeRoe. I'm a former Midcoast Community Council member. I've been on the coast for over 10 years now. I'm a real estate salesperson over there. I recommend, or I would request, that no changes be made in the current 125 maximum build-out down to the, either of the recommended or proposed limits. The, if you see a need, that you, that you need to reduce the number from the 125, I especially have a problem with the quotas that you have in the different areas that she mentioned, that, excuse me, that he mentioned before. Moss Beach in particular, 12 units is what would be able to be developed in any particular year. And the water situation is the most difficult in Moss Beach. It would be probably taking, you know, 10 of those 12 as unbuiltable, so you'd actually knock it down from 40 units to about 30 units in practicality. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Lee, followed by George Mazingo.
Good morning, President Gordon, members of the board. Christina Lee, on behalf of SAMCAR, San Mateo County Association of Realtors. We are opposed to the proposal by the Planning Commission to restrict growth to 1% for several reasons. First off, just the basic laws of supply and demand with economics is that if there is a lack of supply and there is a demand, as there is in our area, it is beautiful on the coast, then the prices will go up. And if we allow supply to continue to increase at the current status quo, then affordability, necessarily, it may still, we may continue to have affordability problems, but it won't be as worse as if we restricted it to 1%. Further, the division, the further division that is proposed by the Planning Commission within the neighborhoods is really a punishment on the neighborhood of El Granada, where most of the building and development is occurring currently. Because of the water restrictions of infrastructure that were mentioned earlier in Moss Beach and Malatera, those areas wouldn't use the allocated permits that they would be allowed, and El Granada would be restricted because their relative population is smaller. And so, we not only oppose the 1% growth limit, but also the further restriction by neighborhood based on their population. There are no, there is no reasoning behind these limits. Understandably, there are concerns about overwhelming the infrastructure. But I ask you, where is the science, the direct connection behind the 1% other than really mirroring Half Moon Bay's Measure D? There is no direct evidence to support that these limits actually make the process more, make the process better for families. Instead, it only makes it more uncertain. And I really ask you to look at the current process of Half Moon Bay's implementation of Measure A, that was adopted in early 90s, and Measure D, and how the point system that they use currently, and even the proposed system, the fallacies that, that makes more uncertain. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. George Mazingo, followed by Paul Godwin.
Good morning. Board of Supervisors, George Mazingo, San Mateo County Association of Realtors. I'd just like to point out, the position of our association is not to support the recommended downzoning of the Caltrans property to open space and COSC. The Board of Supervisors, we believe, should have the ability, the opportunity to have flexibility in the future because this document will govern that zoning for the next 20 years, have the flexibility to allow changes in the future as new needs may arise. Further, we believe it's somewhat fiscally imprudent to sell this property at 30-year-ago prices. Further, if respected, we'd like to encourage the county to complete the other LCP tasks that are yet unfinished, including requiring public agencies to submit a list of proposed public works projects for construction and a five-year capital plan, a capital improvement plan, excuse me, and further having the staff evaluate methods to provide affordable housing on the mid-coast. We are particularly supportive in a program that would have incentive-based programs for non-conforming and substandard lots. And finally, we're very highly supportive of the Board of Supervisors' practice of, following their typical practice of grandfathering in development proposals that are currently in the process, are currently in the pipeline, are currently being reviewed by the county, so they may be exempt from the requirements of these amendments in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Godwin, to be followed by Teresa McNaughton.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Paul Godwin, and I'm a resident of the 1,200 block of Date Street in Montero. I am here today to urge you to vote to rezone the Slide bypass land from medium-density residential use to open space. As a resident of that area, I see actively, each and every day, the community using the land in a active way for recreation, for dog walking, children playing, and it is a great asset to the community. I also hold here 10 letters from residents that could not be here today and have submitted them through me to you. I wanted to- I wanted to point out that the land has historically been a gathering place for Monterans, who in years past held a Fourth of July parade through town. The destination of the parade was this area, the east of the 1200 block of Date Street, which was known as Deer Park. Also, I would like to read briefly a portion of a letter from Linda G. McCarthy, who is a resident of that area since 1971, and she writes, "Keep in mind, this land was deeded to the residents of Montero back in the days that Joaquin Miller resided here and owned this property. Someone needs to address conscientious planning on the coast, mindful of impact, water resources, schooling, and traffic. Be responsible." Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa McNaughton, followed by Will Smith.
Good morning, Supervisors. I am a resident of Montero, and I am firmly opposed to selling the bypass land for private interest in development. On that note, I would also like to mention that I am a 50% owner of a residential construction company. But just as environmentally responsible building, or green building, takes thoughtful consideration, so does land development. The Green Belt in particular is an amazing area in which many people walk their dogs, take their children to play, ride their horses. In exchange, we tolerate the inconvenience of frequent water restrictions and extremely high water and sewer fees. Our sewers overflowed this past winter and polluted many of our coastal beaches for many weeks. We have been also given firm instructions to reduce or eliminate water usage during powder hourages. Water and sewer is a big issue in Montero and Moss Beach. The infrastructure, in my opinion, for many new homes is not strong enough to handle this. I realize that lots will be sold, permits granted, and more development will happen in Montero and all over the mid-coast, but it is very, and it is very possible that my company will participate and benefit in this process. But we need to make these decisions regarding land development very carefully. I asked the Board to support and adopt the Planning Commission recommendations. Development in Montero will happen, but we can please, before it's too late, put aside this land for the people and the wildlife that live there. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Will Smith, to be followed by Karen Wilson.
Hello, my name is Will Smith. I am 11 years old. I live on Hart Street in Montero with my mom, dad, and my older brother and sister. I am here because I am told that people want to cut down the forest and build houses. My family and I think that would, that would be a terrible thing for several reasons. This is an area used by many people in the neighborhood. Jeff and his wife got married in the forest. People walk their dogs, people jog their, people ride their bikes and horses. A lot of kids play in the forest. In school, I learned about habitat. The forest is a habitat for many animals. I've seen deer, squirrels, raccoons, and skunks in the forest. I am sure the creek running through the forest is also an important habitat. Every winter, every winter, when the rain comes, we worry about flooding. My dad is worried that if new houses are built and the flooding will get worse and the county will not fix it. Most of all, most of all, a lot of people in the neighborhood love the forest and do not want to see it cut down. I know that money has a lot to do with your choice. Please think of people in the neighborhood you represent and not the people with a lot of money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Will. Karen Wilson, to be followed by Jeffrey Davis.
Hi, my name is Karen Wilson. I'm a resident of Montero. After 12 years of concern, six years working on this LCP update, and two minutes to speak, I really hope you read all of the letters I've been sending. The LCP update 20 years ago put a limit on the amount of overall development. This current LCP update is going to increase that number, and in 20 years, the next LCP update will do the same thing. The mid-coast is in the coastal zone. We are supposed to be careful and use the best planning practices so that development and the environment can survive together. I am confident no one here wants the mid-coast to look like Hayward. Historically, the county has only viewed development parcel by parcel, not as a whole. As this update is segmented through this process, remember, we do not have paved streets, we do not have sidewalks for our children, we do not have a storm drain system, we do not have a school district willing to place a middle school or high school in a reasonable location to the mid-coast. We don't have public transit, it's very limited. We don't have school busing. I don't see any of these things changing anytime soon to support growth faster than what we can support. We also have water problems and sewer problems, which you've heard here. Water problems are a national problem. They're not going to go away either instantly. Also, what to be, to be taken into consideration are, we have tsunami zones, earthquake zones, we also have flood zones and areas of potential mudslides. There are, there is a lot of issues that need to be looked at as we develop the coast. Setting standards that maintain growth at a rate that allows infrastructure to support those who live here and who will purchase their million-dollar-plus homes should be the goal. Not a fragmented process, but a big picture, and not to burden our children in the future with the lack of infrastructure, or the lack of water, or the lack of schools and education, but that we work together to develop a community that can sustain itself. This is a very fragile decision coming forward. In regards to the Caltrans easement, we need to save it, there are no parks in Montero, and we should not have children crossing Highway 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Davis, followed by Mario Pellegrini.
Good morning. I am, in fact, the Jeffrey that was married in the woods, and I want to assure you had all the permits. My wife and I moved to Montero from Menlo Park about four years ago to raise our family, and though it's been a little bit fogger than we had intended, it's been a real pleasure. The rural character and the open space has been a real benefit, we think, to our family and hopefully to our kids in the near future. We think this is a real jewel in the county crown. Someone mentioned earlier about science, and I would like to point them out to the 2003 Pew's Ocean Commission report on coastal United States. And one of the striking statistics from that report reminds us that half the US population lives in coastal counties, and those resident populations are expected to increase by 25 million in the next 10 years. And one thing to consider as a conclusion to that is that the pollution and sprawl will be the greatest threats to ocean-related tourism, recreation, and coastal agriculture, all of which are significant components and sustainable components of the San Mateo coastal economy. It seems to me now more than ever vital to implement strong policies to manage the future growth, such that we preserve and enhance the value of these public assets and maintain the, and enhance the sustainability of the economy on the coast. Today, I'm joining all my neighbors here, and many who unfortunately could not make it this morning, to support the recommendations of the Planning Commission, specifically with regard to setting the mid-coast growth rate limit to 1%, which is compatible with an already overburdened and expensive infrastructure. Again, back to supply and demand, more houses, more pressure on the water system, and we will be the highest water rates in the United States, if we're not already. The 1% growth limit is also consistent with policies in other coastal communities in the San Mateo County, and I think that's important to consider. And the other thing, of course, we're supporting is the rezoning of the Caltrans right-of-way land to open space, which is not only the most appropriate, which is the most appropriate end to a 20-year struggle. Thank you.
Jeff, thanks to both of you. Mario Pellegrini, to be followed by Bruce Stebbins.
Mario Pellegrini, resident and private property owner in Montero, California. I am concerned about the process that we're going through. Obviously, this room is split, the community is split between rabid environmentalists and people who respect private property, and economic, transportation, education issues that are affected by the environmental implementation of restrictive programs. Everything on the update that I see is not a reaffirmation or an enlargement of the coverage, it's a reduction in them. We just had somebody say, "We're glad for the update," going from 125 down to 82 units. That's a new kind of mathematics for me. The thing about economic investments, up here you have private property that was bought and purchased as open space and agricultural land, agricultural PAD property. Now it's being rezoned and limited to the, not only the environmental request, already there, you can't build this, you can't build that. They want to cut the size of houses you can build with one density on 160 acres. Now the house can't be 100, above 127 feet high, and the floor space is limited. So, in every case, there's limitations. I don't understand why you, as our representatives, don't see the economic impact about what's missing in infrastructure. If you lower the tax base because you lower the building and the residencies, you lower your infrastructure. You don't have the money for it. Helen Keller could tell you that. And here we are, again, coming back again and again, but I think the Board, in its previous actions and the current ones, are endorsing of these more restringent additions to the Coastal Commission. It just, it just is a contradiction of what the people really want. The people don't want more regulation, they want less. They don't want more taxes, they want less. They want a right to have their American dream and build all kinds of houses, yes, even monster homes.
Thank you, Mr. Pellegrini. Bruce Stebbins, to be followed by Glow Nair.
Good morning. I'm Bruce Stebbins. I'm here to talk about two issues that pertain to the annual growth rate limit. The first one being the dispersment, and there's some language in here that says that there's a provision that will suspend the distribution requirement when extenuating circumstances exist, and those circumstances exist already with the lack of water in Moss Beach and also in El Granada with sewer. So, I think it's best if, whatever the number is that gets built out, that it just, wherever you can build is where those units go. And the second thing is the total number that gets to be built out, and I think that the lowest number that is here is extremely low, and the number of 125, I think that's too high, and I'd like for you to consider a compromise between the two. Thank you.
Thank you. Glow Nair, to be followed by Joe Chamberlain.
My position on this is, generally, as a banker, I like to see things decided by market forces. In my view, the coast is a great area to be, and one of the main ways by which a family can get in here is to build your own house. And if you limit it, what happens is that the existing houses go up in value, and the only way you can get onto the coast here is to buy, is to buy an existing house, and that increases, you know, your base cost, you know, to be on the coast. The other thing I'd like to see is, I'd like to see infrastructure improved, rather than saying the infrastructure is poor, so we won't allow housing. I think the primary way by which you control housing, or control the way area develops is by having appropriate zoning and parcel sizes, and say, "Well, this is an area where, you know, the parcel size is 5,000, this is an area where it's 8,000," and so on. And so, you have that mechanism to control the housing, but to basically say, "Well, this is the permits," is probably the wrong approach. And also, we should focus more on, you know, hey, you're so close to the ocean, it's like, you know, water, water everywhere, not a drop to drink, you know? It's, you're right at the ocean, and you don't have water. So, you know, you probably have to improve on the infrastructure rather than limiting the permits. Thanks.
Thank you. Joe Chamberlain, to be followed by Brendan Shear.
President Gordon, honorable supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you regarding the issues before us. As you know, I live on the coast side in Lobitos Canyon, what I consider next to heaven, and I consider myself blessed to live there, and I hope that you also have an opportunity to visit the coast as much as possible. I'm here to speak with you about an issue that we haven't discussed here today, and that's how the population trends are moving in our county. As you know, from the population counts, we're down about 15,000 people in our county from 2,000. That means people are leaving our county, not coming into our county. If we go ahead and continue to increase the number of people living on the coast side, what we'll be doing is transferring people from the already-developed and established infrastructure of the bayside to the unestablished, uninfrastrucure-supported coast side. That's not a good idea, especially, as you know, since the state takes our money away and gives us back very little in which to help the people in our community. For example, there is no public transportation on the coast side. There's an occasional bus. The bayside has lots of buses, Caltrain, and BART. The coast side has no school busing. The coast side also suffers from the lack of the infrastructure, as I mentioned. There's not water coming from Hetch Hetchy, there's very little sewer processing that can occur. All of that is taken care of on the bayside. So, I urge you to consider restricting, I have put less than 1% on my little badge that says 1%, that the costs are greater than just the development of the coast side. The bayside will pay a price, because we will be removing the people from the bayside to the coast side, and that will not benefit the entire community. I'd also like to speak with you in support of the row property, and please, let's get our pedestrians and bicycles off of our roadways.
Thank you. Brendan Shear, to be followed by Michael Panisi. And if I'm getting these names wrong, I apologize.
You did wonderfully. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm coming, actually, I live in San Francisco, and I'm someone who's looking to move to the coast side, and I wanted to speak a little bit about my perspective. I think the reason that people want to move to the coast side is because of how it is in terms of its beauty, its being between open space, between the ocean, and that when I contemplate moving to the coast, I'm very aware of minimal resources and of what the particular limitations are on living there, that there aren't the same sort of forms of infrastructure, and that those are sacrifices that I'm willing perhaps to accept in exchange for green space. And I would like therefore to advise that the council limit growth, because as these places, as someone mentioned, there are other places to live in the Bay Area, and if I wanted to live somewhere that was a million sees of houses and no trees, I would be able to find that with a great deal of ease. This is a different place, and I would like to preserve that. Secondly, I'd like to preserve the open space, or D that as open space, because again, the values of this community are something that draw me to it, and I think that's an important perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Panisi, followed by Jordan McWhorter.
Hi, I'm Michael Panisi. I live in Pacifica. I'm a builder on the coast, and I'm opposed to the 1% growth law for many reasons. I have friends and family who have worked really, really hard to develop their property, and it currently takes a year and a half plus to get a permit, and I think it's totally unreasonable to take this property away from these people, basically, and tell them, "Now your year and a half's limited to five years," or whatever. And it's also, amazes me that, you know, the people speaking that don't want the growth, they consider themselves living in heaven, and they don't want no one else to live in heaven. I love the coast. There's 50 houses being built a year. There doesn't seem to be a problem. The problem now is how hard it is to get a permit and what the people have to go through after they spend $300,000 on their piece of property to make it developable. That's a problem. It's a freedom that I feel is not right. Thanks.
Thank you. Jordan McWhorter, followed by Terry Gossett.
Hello, I'm Jordan McWhorter. I am a lifetime resident of Pacifica, and I'm a builder who works in Montero, the mid-coast area, every single day. I oppose the 1%. I oppose changing it at all. I don't think, for the last 20 years, if we look at what it is, it hasn't even been a problem. I think we're depriving people of their right to build their homes. Like Mike said, you know, it's hard enough to build as it is. Too many people are discouraged from building now. I think the people that are building are people who live in the area and want to build a better home for their family, and so they go through the task of planning and all this so that they can have a place in this area. And I just think most of the people who are opposing it, one, live in this area and already have their home, and they don't want 1%, they want 0%. And once you, you know, you get through your permitting and your plans, and they still try to shut you down, day after day, building with petty things left and right. So, you got to understand, these people aren't going for 1, they're going for what I believe is 0%, and we just have to watch out for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Gossett, and after Mr. Gossett, we're going to take a very short break to change the videotape.
Good morning, President Gordon, and Supervisors and staff. First, I wanted to thank you for the increased public notification that you've done. I think it's working quite well. Second, I'm speaking for Californians for Property Rights, and we have three recommendations. We gave you a nine-page summary in great detail. Our first recommendation has to do with growth rate. We support the historic growth rate of 52 units per year, but not as a limit, but as an average. So, for example, the first year, if only 42 units were built, the next year, you could have 62 to maintain the 52, which has been the average the last 20-plus years. have 62 to maintain the 52, which has been the average the last 20-plus years. Our second recommendation is that you redraft the boundaries of both Montero Water Sanitary District and Granada Sanitary District, conform with the law, in accordance with LCP 2.14B, to correspond with the urban and rural residential boundaries. That way, there would be a congruency, as required by law, of the service area, the electoral area, and the tax rate area. Our third recommendation is to convert the current oceanfront Montero Treatment Plant to open space in accordance with the LCP 2.23, 11.6, 11.9, and about six other sections that we so cited. It makes a lot of sense, because it gets the holding tanks away from the ocean. It's perfectly situated between the historic Montero Lighthouse and the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve, where I live. When we have big storms, then I won't have brown frothy stuff coming down my way, that'd be another advantage. So all of these things, we feel very strongly about, and if you could read the details in the letter. I'll leave you with one little anecdote, and that is, I look at all these meetings, as Karen Wilson said over these many years, it's a lot of little stovepipes, and it's like a massive jigsaw puzzle. And we get focused on these pieces, and we need to stop and look at the cover of the box every now and then. See, where are we going? What is the real vision? What kind of compromise do we have? So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We need to take a short break, about three minutes, change the videotape. Earlier this morning, the Board of Supervisors declared next week as Public Health Week. It would be a good opportunity for everybody to get up and stretch, maybe walk some of your 10,000 steps, but don't go far, because we'll be back in just a minute. Eighty-four speakers, we're at speaker number 28. We will continue until approximately 12:15, when the Board will take a short lunch break, and we'll continue after that. Our next two speakers, first one up is Chuck Kozak, to be followed by Lance Castle.
Good morning, members of the Board. Chuck Kozak, 1465 Buena Vista Avenue in Montero. Given only two minutes, I'd like to address specifically the growth rate. The 1% growth rate will give the county, the special districts, and the other governments within this jurisdiction the adequate time to wisely plan the needed infrastructure expansion and protection of environmental and coastal resources. There is no substantial data that we know to support the claim. The building more houses more rapidly within the midcoast will alleviate any sort of short-term or long-term housing crisis in the county. As Joe mentioned, Joe Chamberlain mentioned when she was up here, the county population is actually decreasing, and it isn't, in fact, the Department of Finance, State Department of Finance, projects county growth to be 0.3% average over the next 50 years. To be looking at anything higher than a 1% growth rate for the midcoast would be putting an unfair burden on our communities. We don't believe that the finding can be made that any short-term or limited financial benefit for a continued high rate of building would offset the loss of property values and the detrimental impact to the coastside quality of life. This is a coastal zone, what's the rush to develop it? We have a state mandate to protect coastal resources, coastal-dependent industries in our coastal communities, and there's really no reason to build it out that fast. We don't have the schools, we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the roads. We're probably not going to have them anytime soon. There will still be houses to build, there will still be houses to sell. There will still be affordable housing to be made available. There's no lack of housing on the coast side. There's plenty for sale. And this is not going to affect it, but instead it's going to be protective. Thank you.
Thank you. Lance Castle, to be followed by Carol Greer.
President Gordon, honorable board. My name's Lance Castle, once again, a fourth generation lifelong coastside resident. I support the status quo. The 52-year, the 52 homes, I believe, is a longer history. I think in recent history, we're building more homes, and what I see is probably a 50% to 75% reduction in the building trades. I hear a lot of numbers, a lot of numbers about restrictions and obstructions. What about the numbers of people that derive their living from the housing industry? What are the numbers of the effect on the coastal economy? These special interest groups I hear are throwing out their numbers. Well, I want to know what's going to happen to the coast side if the economy has difficulty. Personally, what I see is with this reduction, 100 years, I have a nearly 100-year family history on the coast, and that's in jeopardy. I'll have to find someplace where the special interests aren't restricting our livelihood.
Thank you. Carol Greer, to be followed by Donald Spratling, I believe. Carol Greer. Going once, twice. Donald Spratling, to be followed by Stephen Grobe. Donald Spratling. Stephen Grobe. Oh, I got one. Stephen will be followed by Edith Castle.
President Gordon, members of the Board, I am Steve Grobe from Montero, and I am here for the defense, the defense of the coast side, and the defense of common sense over those who would just willy-nilly build the coast side out. The people who want to build without restriction, and that's what they want, they say the other side wants no building, have to take into consideration that there is only one road in, well, two roads in and two roads out of the coast side. And that is not going to change, no matter what the property tax base is, et cetera, et It's just an unsustainable area for unlimited growth. And by cutting it to 1%, I just handed the young lady the projections that the state made from 2000 to 2050. That will show you that 0.3% growth rate is projected for San Mateo County, the entire county. 1% on the coast is more than three times the growth that the county is going to have over the next 45 years. And because of that, I definitely think common sense dictates that because of the water and other infrastructure restrictions that the coast side cannot physically overcome, that growth must be restricted. Politics is referred to as the art of compromise, but there are certain areas where compromise doesn't work. Solomon figured that out with the baby. You are the caretakers of our San Mateo coast side, and I'm asking you to save the baby. Thank you.
Edith Castle, to be followed by Chris Michelson.
Hello, my name is Edith Castle, and I live in the unincorporated area of the San Mateo coast. I have a concern about reducing the number of new home permits to 1%. One question that I have is, of the 125 available building permits available every year, how many in the last 10 years were actually issued per year? We have an average of 52, but how many of those, if you take a 10-year history, were actually issued? Furthermore, requiring the additional requirements and scrutiny that every project has to go through in this day and age is enough, in my opinion. Why does, do these figures need to be reduced? Without having an actual year-by-year history, do we know that? Furthermore, requiring highway projects be conditioned on development of adjacent pedestrian access, requiring that they do, could have the potential of destroying any improvement to our road. The other option is to, which was listed also, is to work in coordination with Caltrans for future planning. And everyone can agree that our roads, we do need to have pedestrian and bicycle access to Highway 1. 92 is another issue that is not on the Board today. Finally, I have attended these meetings out of sacrifice to my business, because I believe that these issues are important. Many others that I have spoke with feel the same, but simply cannot afford the time to attend these meetings. I have seen and heard the same five to 10 people who attend every meeting, talk to each of you individually, and appeal almost every project, use environmental or infrastructure issues to protect their own property values. In addition, they speak of the intent of policies made years ago to argue their cause and claim their opinion is fact. Intent is opinion, and it can be argued in many different ways. I urge all of you, the decisions you make are very important and deserve the time to see the whole picture. Please strive for the factual answers to all of your questions before you render a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Michelson, to be followed by Sharice McHugh.
Good morning, honorable supervisors. Chris Michelson, lifelong coastside resident, current president of Coastside County Water District, and chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee of the Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Water District, I'd really like to thank Mr. Bergman for working so well with our district, in that we hope that you will provide solid numbers for which our district will provide the water and infrastructure to follow whatever build-out numbers and rate this Board may provide. We look forward to following your recommendations, and we thank you on that. From the Chamber perspective, we really would like the inclusion of various strong language supporting job-creating facilities on the coast side, in that we are becoming a bedroom community, and we need to provide more of a backbone for a service community and local job creation to get people off of our impacted highways. And as a parent, I really would, am encouraged to see that there is language in there in strong support of the coastal trail, continuation of parallel trails, and someday I really hope to see a seamless trail from the southern end of the Ritz all the way through Pacifica, through the Devil's Slide alignment, which will soon be abandoned now that we have, it's like secure funding to actually build that tunnel we've been waiting so long for. And I really encourage you to support any sort of trail that gets people off of the highways and allows for recreational opportunities for people enjoying our beautiful coast and for current residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharice McHugh, followed by Ruth Horstfall.
Thank you, Supervisor Gordon, and all supervisors. Sharice McHugh, Heffernan Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. The Chamber does support a seamless trail all the way through, along the coastline, and especially through the harbor. The Chamber also supports residential space within commercial space, but does not believe that the LCP should dictate where that residential space lies within the building. We have several buildings in Montero that are on, and elsewhere, that are on sloped properties, so that the first floor is actually not on street level but below, and the second floor is actually on street level that would be conducive to a business there within. We also hope that you redefine the C1 as neighborhood commercial, to bring it a little bit more up-to-date with the non-traditional businesses that we now have on the coast side. As an example, software designing. Also, on the overport overlay, we hope that you make a formula to reflect the number of persons per square inch, rather than a blanket three persons for a site, whether it is 2,500 square feet or 14,000 square feet. For example, if you were to choose one person per 1,000 square feet, so that it could apply across the board. And lastly, the Chamber does not support limiting the percentage of properties with caretaker units to 25%. Caretaker units have been good watchdogs in curb vandalism and crime, and increase the allowable square footage of caretaker units. Most of the properties are 3,500 square feet, making them ineligible to have a caretaker unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Horstfall, or Horstel, followed by Austin Harkin.
I live in Montero, and have seen a great deal of development in my fairly limited time there, about four and a half years. And the area that is being looked at for the bypass area, there are seven new houses within a block of my home in that four years, and for others that are in process. This is an area that has, as you may know, quite a bit of flooding. And the bypass area that has, if it was to be built on, that would significantly increase the erosion, and therefore the, you know, amount of water that goes into this low area, which properties look out on. It is used, you know, extensively for recreation and contributes to quality of life. Also, in terms of water, for those people who are on wells, some of the flooding does have a sort of a benefit of filling up their wells. And if water was to be, if that property was to be built on this bypass area and water had to be moved downstream, it would further contribute to the issues that already exist downstream for the housing down there. And also, maybe there wouldn't be water in those wells and wells for the new development. So I would like to say that I agree with the LCP proposition to move the bypass land to open space and limit growth to 1%. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Austin Harkin, to be followed by Lynn Messick.
Supervisors, my name is Austin Harkin. I live on 8th Street in Montero. I'm a small contractor on the coast. I'm totally against the 1% limit on the amount of permits you're issuing. And as someone that has been through the process a few times over the last number of years, I think there's already more than enough roadblocks and enough stuff to get through, with just getting a permit to build a house without putting this extra layer of bureaucracy on top of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lynn Messick, to be followed by Larry DeYoung.
Good morning. How are you? My name's Lynn Messick, I live in Montero. Thanks for listening to all of us today. I know a lot of us are very passionate about what we're all here to meet and discuss. I actually live on Cedar and Drake Street, and my house is two stories, and it looks out onto all of those beautiful trees that are in the Devil's Slide bypass right-of-way. And that is one of the reasons why we moved there just three and a half years ago. Our standard of life, our well-being, is greatly enhanced because of all of the open space that we have there. We go walking every day, bicycling, walk the dog. I know a lot of my neighbors in here by the names of their dogs. So that's really fun, but please, please, it's a very small piece of land, and it would be greatly appreciated if you followed the LCP's recommendations and kept that as open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry DeYoung, to be followed by Mike Campania.
My name's Larry DeYoung. I live at 991 Elm Street, which is immediately adjacent to the right-of-way, so it is in my backyard. A few points I wanted to make that haven't been discussed yet. This right-of-way is a very important linkage between Rancho del Corral del Tierra and McNeese Ranch, because it's a green belt that actually connects those. I live right there, I see people walking every day, walking their dogs, riding their bikes. I ride my horse there. So I would say I'm not a nimby, I'm a kimby. Keep it in my backyard, it's already open space, it's already being used that way. The other thing I'd like to point out, I keep hearing about private property rights. As far as I know, this is owned by the State of California, which makes it public land, and therefore I don't see any issue of private property rights with rezoning this to open space. And as far as the property values go, it's kind of interesting, the realtors have told me, since this is low-density housing, you'll have large houses and large acreage, and since I'm immediately adjacent, my property values will go up. But now I hear they're not going to go up. I'm very confused what my property values are going to do. And I'll tell you the truth, I don't care. I care about the quality of life, and I hope you keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Mike Campania, followed by Kathy Laus.
My name's Mike Campania, I've been living on the coast for 27 years, and I'm here to support, maintain the status quo. We currently have a yard, I work for Big Creek Lumber, we employ 15 local employees, including a couple of high school kids. And if the cutback on the permits and the building, we might have to rethink and lay off some people, which would impact the roads, they'd be driving over the hill. Plus, we wouldn't be able to hire high school kids, because given part-time jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Laus, followed by Alicia Laus. Kathy Laus, followed by Alicia Laus. Devon Yoshimini. Devin. Devin's going to be followed by Gael Yoshimini.
Hi, Board of Supervisors. My name's Devon Yoshimini, and I'm 13 years old. And the reason I'm speaking today is because I want to support the Big Wave project, which is a project where people build homes and jobs for special needs children. As a special needs child, I and my friends want to have this land. I want in El Granada. And the reason I want this project to succeed is because most of my friends, I can't, most of my friends can't drive, and I want them to stay close to their family. So I hope that that could be possible. I may not be Martin Luther King, but I want my friends and family that are special needs people to work and live on the coast side. So, yeah, that's my speech.
Thank you, Devin. Gael Yoshimini, followed by Derek Kulda.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors and President Gordon, for being stewards of our beautiful land. And my family lives in Half Moon Bay. That was my son. And he's 13 years old, and he has neurological impairments and developmental delays, and has been in the special education program all his life. I've left professional careers in order to take time to raise him, the extra time that it takes to raise a child with special needs. And I've learned that students with special needs are marginalized socially, academically, and even geographically. And so in getting to know many special needs families, I know one of our greatest concerns is their future as adults. And when we start talking about that, that raises all kinds of fears, tears, you know, about what that future looks like, because there is that marginalization. But now there's a dream. There's a dream to have a live-work community in our community, and it's called Big Wave. And it's for the disabled to be able to live and work in a community on the coast side. And it's a place where our children don't have to move away, but can grow up with their friends and family in the place where we've invested so much time to have that community happen. This dream includes being a light in our mainstream community. That demonstrates that the weak can live with the strong, and we can offer our very best to each other, where there can be unity and diversity. So I beg of you to consider our dream as you steward this land, as it affects what kind of community of people we are on this coast side. And I ask for you to decide on behalf of building the Big Wave community, as it reflects the beauty of the land and also compassion and justice in our hearts.
Thank you. Derek Kulda, followed by Gamaro Serrano.
Good morning, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Derek Kulda, 350 El Granada Boulevard, and I am a builder who lives on the coast. I support the coastal trail. I think it will help beautify the coast and make it a desirable place for my family to live. I don't support the Highway One parallel trail. I just think that area should be left for the highway. I do support the pedestrians' walkways under or over, because I, you know, I see that there's a real problem with that. And I know if someone personally has been hit by a car. With regard to the residential growth rate, I support the status quo for several reasons. One, when I heard George talking about that, he said that the, one of the reasons the Planning Commission recommended the 1% was because of the infrastructure problems. But he went and talked to the different agencies, and they are either planning or intend to or are fulfilling the requirements or the demands of the zoning regulations. And if they're not fulfilling them now, you know, they will. And this whole issue, you know, I started paying attention to this, the stuff here on the coast, all this politics about building about 10 years ago, and some of the same voices that I've heard 10 years ago fighting to improve the infrastructure are today using the argument that the infrastructure won't support the growth. I think they just have a special interest, and their argument is no good. I just want to reiterate what many people before me have said about the limitations. They are already very, very high, and I don't think we need any more obstacles. Thank you for your time.
Gamaro Serrano, followed by Joe Guntrun. And Joe Guntrun, followed by Juliet Kulda.
Honorable Board Supervisors, President, I'm Joe Guntrun. I'm a resident of Montero for the last 24 years, and I've worked on the coast for the last 24 years. Regarding the Caltrans property, first, if it can be, it should be returned to the original owners with whom it was taken from. If not, parcel it up for residential use, perhaps five-acre parcels, and also make parks, playing fields, or even a boys' and girls' club. I thought the boys' and girls' club was going to be here while my kids were growing up, but it has never happened because of restrictions. So perhaps when my grandchildren grow up, they'll have a boys' and girls' club. Regarding the guidelines in place for the limited growth, today, the guidelines work. Whether it be the controls on sewer, water, or the economic factors, the growth restrictions of today are working. Forty-five percent of the coast is owned by vacant property owners. It is not like San Bruno, Daly City, Palo Alto, Millbrae, San Mateo, which is built-out. So stricter restrictions should not apply. The vacant landowners pay property taxes and special bonds today, too, for sewer and water. If they're going to be limited on using their property, those taxes should be reduced. Staff has also recommended that the building permits be counted on a per-unit basis. An example of this, if you were to build a four-unit apartment building, that the four units would count as four single building permits, further reducing the building permits. The average building permits on the coast side from 1998 to 2003, I believe, has been 61 per year, and not 52 over the 20 years, and that's because of growth factors. In closing, I'd like to say, let the free market control the growth limits as it has been for the last 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Juliet Kulda, to be followed by Betty Diacisto.
Good morning, Honorable Supervisors. My name is Juliet Kulda. I live in El Granada. First of all, I'd like to say I am in support of updating the coastal trails and providing pedestrian crossing on the Highway One. I think a lot of us on the coast would be for those things. Those sound like really good improvements. In regards to the 1% growth, I have a question. As a real estate agent, I'm wondering, does anybody have a plan as how we'll implement this 1%? I deal with a lot of people that own lots in El Granada, and they are looking to sell those lots, or people that are wanting to build on their own lots and build a house. And I know in Half Moon Bay, there have been a lot of problems with figuring out how the, who was going to get the Measure A and this and that. And some people that want to just go build a house, it would mean carrying their mortgage plus carrying their payments on the land. And while they're waiting for a building permit or going through building process, they could be put on hold for five years, waiting for a lotto drawing to be one of the 1% that gets to go build. So it would, it could make a lot of people go to, you know, have problems that they have to sell their land meanwhile, and this and that, on top of all the restrictions they have. So I have that question as to how that would be implemented. I have heard nothing as to how that would be done. I was at the community workshops a couple of years ago, and when they were at El Granada School in the evening, and George Bergman was there, you know, looking for staff recommendations, hearing feedback from the community, and there were many, many people there. I remember that one night, there were almost 100 people against the 1%, where there were maybe 17, or 20, or 25 for it. And both community workshops were like that. That's why George, I think, has come up with the 80, saying, "Let's kind of find a middle ground." In this room, it seems like, I'm hearing a lot, it seems like people come up and they're for the 1% or they're for the status quo at 125. I would hope you would consider to go halfway in-between as a compromise, because a lot of people have views on both sides. And in regards to, someone had mentioned how beautiful the coast side is. We all love it there for the beauty. We are not talking about building on the open space. We're not talking about building on the state property. We're talking about infill lots that are already zoned for residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Diacisto, followed by April Vargas.
Hi, my name is Betty Diacisto, and I live in Montero, and I've lived there for 27 years. I actually moved down to Montero because my family got into horses, and we started raising horses down in Montero in Moss Beach. And I no longer have the quarter horses, but I still stayed there, and I love it there. I was born in San Francisco and still have a lot of family in San Francisco. And when I talk to people, they ask me where I live, and I tell them Montero. The thing that most people say, "Oh, my God, you're so lucky to live in such a beautiful place," and I know that. And I want to keep it beautiful. And so I support the LCP plan, and I hope the Board will support the plan along with us. Thank you.
Thank you. April Vargas, to be followed by Jeff Peck.
Good morning, Board Members. My name is April Vargas, and I'm speaking on behalf of Committee for Green foothills. Briefly, I'll say that the Committee supports all of the Planning Commission recommendations that are before you today. And just to speak a little bit about some comments that I've heard by many people here today, saying that there are already enough restrictions to building a house so that the annual growth rate limit doesn't need to be reduced. Just building the house is not the issue here. It's what happens after the house is constructed. What happens after the house is constructed? Of course, people move in, and they start making more demands on the area for water, for sewer. And as several people have alluded, in the area in the back of Montero, near the bypass right-of-way land, there's been consistent problems with flooding. And while the county has certainly made attempts to do something about it, it's a huge problem that really will have to be attacked on a real community-wide level. Up to this point, that has not happened. Putting more houses in at an accelerated rate only makes all these problems compound. So the fact that it's difficult to build a house, while frustrating, is not the beginning of this problem. So we believe, as many people have said that support the 1%, it will allow the services that are required by the people who live in the houses to be made available. We certainly applaud the fact that the special districts have made a commitment to be able to serve build-out at that time, but there's no way of knowing how soon that's going to happen. These numbers can always be revisited. We just believe that it's prudent, at this point, to be able to allow what the area can reasonably sustain and also allow the infrastructure to catch up. And briefly, you've heard many comments about the bypass right-of-way land. I've met many people here that live in Montero that I've never met before. One of the strongest things about the coast side is the sense of community and the fact that people like to recreate together, love the area, but are also willing to share it with other people that want to live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Peck, followed by Doral, I believe the last name is Lynch.
Yeah, hello. My name is Jeff Peck, and I'm here representing Big Wave and also CPALS. I'm going to refer to a young man who came up, Devon Yoshimini. The project that we want to build concerns a person, a boy just like that. Devon's been on my Special Olympics team, by the way, now for five years. Everybody here is arguing about their turf, what they want to preserve, what they don't want somebody else to have. Let me just give you an idea of maybe an unattended consequence of what you're talking about with these restrictions. You want to have X amount of residences built. You want, I think it's, what, 12 in Moss Beach, 16 in El Granada. The project we want to build is a live-work space that could facilitate up to 48 adults, live-work spaces that are developmentally disabled. If, in fact, you have these restrictions, these kids are adults when they move in, won't be able to do this. This won't be built. These are people who live on the coast now, their parents are getting older, their parents are going to retire, their parents have no money, their parents will die. And where do these kids go after their parents die? Over the hill in some rat-infested state home? We have a chance to build something here for these children. It's a project which coincides with a commercial development that won't create one extra additional housing on the coast side. It will give jobs to these guys, it will give jobs to people on the coast who live here, who work here, clean, high-paying jobs, so they won't have to commute over the hill. So think twice about your restrictions on your residences. Also, look at the hidden language in existing LCP, which prevents projects like Big Wave, a combined DD housing development, live-work space, and a commercial space. We can get priority water use for the DD community, but that won't happen without the commercial space. If, in fact, we can combine the projects and get priority use for both, then both of these things can happen without any impact to the coast. Thank you.
Doral, is it Lynch, Lynette? I guess not. John Yoshimini, followed by Beverly McGuire.
I'm Mr. President and other distinguished board members. We like to do things as a family, as you can tell. I'm also a resident of Half Moon Bay, and I've come before you as a father of Devon, who, as you know, has developmental disabilities, and as a believer in a community filled with love, acceptance, safety, and opportunity for all. I believe, or we believe, as a family and with CPALS and with Big Wave, in a community on the coast in which our children with disabilities can both live, work, play, and continue to be people of worth. We long to be a place where no one gets left out. We believe that Big Wave represents such a hope for this kind of community and for our kids' future. We can see this place close enough, it's like it's on the other side of a river. It's like looking at the promised land. But this river blocks our path. Please consider leading the way by stepping into this river in faith, by reason, and with justice, so that our dear ones can have this gift of hope offered by the Big Wave. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly McGuire, followed by Jonathan Garfield.
Hi, I'm Ruth McGuire. I will be reading on behalf of my mom, and I share a lot of the same feelings. Here are my thoughts about the Devil's Slide bypass land under construction. This land is already functioning primarily as open space and is widely used by the public for hiking, biking, and horseback riding. The two ends of this land connect parts of the existing Rancho Corral de Tierra, open space, and form a logical corridor between them. From our home on Date Street, my husband and I hike almost every day back Elm Street, Caltrans land, and onto Rancho Corral de Tierra to climb partway up Montero Mountain. Our daughter enjoys this land as well. This land is habitat for a large variety of wildlife. During the almost 15 years I've lived in Montero, on Elm Street, I've seen a coyote, the occasional bobcat, innumerable foxes, skunks, opossums, raccoons, deer, rabbits, and countless birds of many species. The Devil's Slide bypass land is also home to existing agriculture, flower fields, and horse ranches that enrich our community by adding diversity and contributing to its rural character. This agriculture will almost certainly be driven out of land if the land is open for residential development, but will have a chance of remaining if the land is rezoned as open space. Although the Devil's Slide bypass land is officially designated residential, what most of it actually is, is open space already in public use. The proposed rezoning would be change in name only. Please vote to rezon this land and keep it primarily what it already is in reality, public open space, and prevent it from being developed for private residential use. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Garfield, followed by Arvin Tandell.
Good morning. Thank you very much for letting me speak here today. I'm speaking in support of the rezoning of the bypass land. I've been a Montero resident since 1987. I moved over there from Menlo Park. And the reason I moved over to the coast side is just due to the sheer beauty of the coast side. coast side. I don't think there's a place like it on the peninsula, and I'm doing everything I can to keep it such a special place. The bypass lands that we're talking about today, as far as the rezoning, are truly unique and special lands. I don't know if you've been there yourself personally, there's hardly any development whatsoever. The land is absolutely pristine, virgin forest, and it's really a joy to go running and walking through there and recreating. And I really think that we should support the planning commission's proposal to keep that as open space for the community, and more importantly, for visitors who want to come over to the coast side and view the coast side as a destination spot. I think that's good for the local economy and anything that we can do to promote the infusion of tourist dollars would help us all. I agree that development must continue. It's inevitable, but I would hope that we would very, very carefully look at the places that this development occur, such that we can minimize the impact on the special environment that we love about the coast side and minimize any adverse impact upon our ability to increase the attractiveness of the coast for tourism. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Arvin Tandel. Tim Pond. Tim will be followed by Mukas Tandel. Let me just check his, Mukas Tandel here. Okay, Tim will be followed then by Brian Flavy. Tim?
My name's Tim Pond. I've lived in El Granada for 17 years. I've built my own house there on a single lot that we bought, and it was probably the only way we could have afforded to own a single-family house. There's a buildable lot next to me and I basically would like you to do anything possible to prevent anybody from building on it. I want this kept, the trees there and everything just like it is, and I want use of this lot without paying for it, and I want this person to continue paying taxes on it for the rest of their lives. About the so-called, about the infrastructure problems, yes, there are infrastructure problems and its name is Half Moon Bay. We have a tunnel in place that's coming in. The water itself limits development. If there is no water, I'm confident that there will be no development due to the nature of our local boards. I really believe the county should take over the road of Half Moon Bay, Highway 1 and 92, because they have been incapable of so much as putting a sidewalk on a major thoroughfare for the last 20 years since I've been in and out of the town. In 17 years, I've seen very little improvement on that road. This morning, it took me 15 minutes to drive, because there's no school, from Half Moon Bay to Hillsborough where I work. 15 minutes. That's not a bad commute compared to anywhere else in the Bay Area. There's never a problem for me commuting north. I really don't think the infrastructure warrants the increased cost to the county and I really support somewhere around 80, 80 houses limit. I think you're going to see, if you implement this limit, teardowns occurring here like they occur in Hillsborough and other areas, and you're going to see the smaller homes on the coast torn down and rebuilt as bigger homes. And I think that we'll be successful in pushing the average price of the homes in El Granada in Montero to $1 million, just like it happened in Half Moon Bay this year. And I think that that's a result of their growth control limits, and I don't really think, thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Flavy followed by Sue DeGree.
Brian Flavy, El Granada. I think that we don't need any more restrictions and that's all I have to say for the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue DeGree to be followed by David Byers.
Yes, it's good afternoon. Thank you. I want to speak in support of the idea of complexes such as Big Wave. I'd like to take this opportunity and encourage you supervisors to think of this as a study session for what could happen throughout the county everywhere, because this is a situation where residents who through no fault of their own have a developmental disability, so even though our taxpayers' money for public schools and county and district are going to educate them well, we have parents taking good care of them, they're healthy, they're part of their communities, and they're learning to work. If there's no place for them to live, they are shipped out as far as Barstow, Nevada, if you want a ranch type of work. And so it's a very frightening situation and Parca, I represent Parca, which is very interested in advocating for special needs populations, so not only on the coast but elsewhere in the community. And if you would look at Big Wave, especially, it is the coast, and I am very familiar with the coastal act and the local coastal plan, and I believe that the local coastal plan and the coastal act smiles on this type of a development, that you, as supervisors, could create categorical exemption or emphasis for this particular population, especially is, there's no cars, they can't drive, they need public transportation. They do, are able to work, but being able to find places to work is also another handicap in our county. We do have group homes, our agencies, it's 21st century now for special needs, group homes are not the way to go. What we want is more independent. They are very capable. You saw Devin who's only 13. There's a lot of Devins out there who are 18, 19, 21, 25. They live in group homes where they don't have what the Big Wave is going to offer for independent quality of living situations that will help the economy of the coast and will give coastal workers, coastal residents, other than disabled work to do. We are now busing them from San Mateo group homes, et cetera, for example, to San Francisco. So if you would keep all these things and please go and take a good study of this project. And a lot of families had to leave, unfortunately.
Thank you. David Byers to be followed by Stephen Skinner.
Good morning, President Gordon. I lost my voice the other day, but I don't think it matters because I don't think my eloquence can match what Devon said up here a few moments ago about the Big Wave project. I just want to say one thing. Any restriction on annual building permits would prevent the construction of this project. That would be tragic. Please do not do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Skinner to be followed by Don Bacon.
Thank you, President Gordon, supervisors. I'm Stephen Skinner, coastside resident and Realtor, and I'm here to express opinions on behalf of myself and my family. First of all, I'd like to offer my support for the recommendations of your planning commission, specifically in the form of the growth limitations for the Montero and mid-coast areas, the 1%, as well as the preservation of the Devil's Slide right-of-way as open space. As a Realtor, I believe that open space has a strong economic value to the area, and there's certainly no better way to advertise a property than being adjacent to or overlooking open space. I'd also like to say that I believe in what the planning commission said in the interest of protecting significant coastal resources, because I think that's what we're talking about here. Certainly, there's no question about the need for infrastructure in various parts of the coast, and I'd like to acknowledge the importance of property rights for all owners. I'm a homeowner. They exist, they're difficult choices that are before all of us, and of course, job creation is important. Nonetheless, I do not believe that unmitigated growth is a solution to either our housing problems or to job creation. Finally, just, I'd like to draw attention to an example of the state of Colorado, which experienced 30% growth between 1990 and 2000, and looked back at the end of that period and decided to sign major land use legislation in 2001, establishing the state's Office of Smart Growth, and that was a bipartisan effort. And the Republican governor of Colorado said, and I quote, "We are stewards of Colorado's future. For the sake of our children and our grandchildren, we must preserve Colorado's natural beauty and provide opportunities for future generations to pursue their dreams." Thank you.
Thank you. Don Bacon to be followed by Ann Carey.
Good afternoon, honorable supervisors. My name is Don Bacon. I'm from Montero. I'd like to speak on one issue, an unmet LCP task assigned to the county that isn't mentioned in your recommendations, and that is the need to implement policy 2.14B to redraft the boundaries of the mid-coast utility districts to conform to the urban and rural residential. 2.14A, confining the service areas, did occur in 1980, but 2.14B, redrafting the boundaries to correspond to the service area, never occurred. 2.14B is in the LCP to make the LCP congruent with pre-existing special district law found in state government code, which ensures that a special district's legisla, or, excuse me, tax and electoral jurisdiction is identical to its service area. And that is not the case with our mid-coast utility districts. And there are a few problems, which I'll briefly run through. On the tax front, the utility districts are receiving a portion of the general tax from the rural areas that they're prohibited from serving, and this deprives the rightful general tax beneficiaries from a portion of their allocation for 25 years now. On special taxes, the failure to implement 2.14B is the reason that Montero Water and Sanitary District is enabled to levy a bond tax against rural properties that are prohibited in perpetuity from using a water system that that bond tax finances. On the electoral front, I'm a rural mid-coast resident. I am not and cannot be a customer of the utility, and yet I can hold elective office in the special district. And of course, the rural voter can also vote in district elections. Now, there's some serious problems with this. That means that I could, you know, politically control the district and implement policies that I don't have to directly experience, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ann Carey will be the last speaker for this session.
Good morning, President Gordon and honorable supervisors. I would like to comment on the planning commission's recommendation for the growth rate. Whatever growth rate you determine as best for the mid-coast, I recommend that it be an optimal growth rate, meaning the greatest amount of growth control at the least amount of cost. While it's true that the mid-coast and Half Moon Bay share certain infrastructure, the growth rate should be tailored to the objectives and variables specific to the mid-coast. For example, the mid-coast is unique in that it's now secure from SPRALE due to the recent acquisitions by Post of Rancho Corral Tierra and Wicklow. Although Half Moon Bay's ordinance is commonly known as 1% growth rate, it's important to note that the ordinance allows an additional 50% increase in the growth rate if units are proposed for the downtown area. If the supply of permits is set below demand, there'll be tremendous costs to the county in implementing a system for distributing the permits, as has happened in Half Moon Bay. Therefore, I recommend that the county not select a growth rate with also simultaneously adopting a plan for distributing the permits. Also, I recommend that the growth rate not be distributed among the communities because the growth rate will increase in Montero and Moss Beach, thereby increasing demand for wealth. At prior hearings, a distribution system was verbally proposed, which will be problematic for the planning department and financially disastrous to the small builder. Once the builder finally obtains his building permit under 1% growth, he will have to wait up to three years before he can use his permit. As has been proven invaluable to Half Moon Bay, I recommend that the board maintain a provision similar to that in current policy, which permits it the flexibility to modify the growth rate. And I also recommend that the board determine how it will fairly distribute the yearly growth rate among the small builders and propose large-scale development so that both can coexist. And last, I recommend that the county include policies in this LCP update that ensure that the growth rate is used only to control the number of homes to be built annually and is not used as a means to limit future improvements to infrastructure. And at this time, I support 82, 2% rate.
Okay, thank you. We, I have 20 additional speakers. The board is going to take a recess for lunch. We will return, and I want to start promptly at 1:00. That will allow us to get through these speakers in roughly 40 minutes, and then the board, at that point, at about 1:40, will close the public hearing and begin its consideration of these issues. Thank you. Reconvene the board of supervisors. We are continuing the public hearing on the issues before us today relative to the local coastal plan update. And let me continue to call speakers. We'll call two at a time, and everyone gets two minutes. Mary Lou Williams to be followed by Nina Pellegrini.
I'm losing my voice, but I'm speaking for Mary Ann because she had to leave. I also am a parent of a 26-year-old disabled daughter. I'm with CPALS, Big Wave, and as well as living and working in the community, they have a option to buy the home they're living in. So it's a dream come true, not only for them, but also for their parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Nina Pellegrini to be followed by Zoe Kirsten Tucker.
Hi, thank you supervisors for staying this long.
Thank you for staying this long.
Yeah, well, I ate, but thank you for taking that lunch. I want to talk about the California Code of Regulations, in which it has a measure that takes to provide the public and affected agencies and districts maximum opportunity to participate in the LCP amendment process, and I thank you that I think you're doing that. So, but it also says that a list of members of the public organizations and agencies appearing at any hearing or contacted for comments on the LCP amendments, they have to be sent copies of all of the responses by the supervisors or the planning, so that we know in detail if you agree with us, you don't agree with us, or if you don't, give us in detail in writing as the reasons as to why. And that is in your code, the LCP code. And another thing that I wanted to mention is, there's been talk about the bypass, the Caltrans abandoned or whatever lands, and they want to do that into an open space, which should be fine, but those lands, I think, were obtained with eminent domain. And my question is, a legal question, don't those people, that the lands were taken by eminent domain, have to have first right of refusal if those lands are to be sold to open space? And I don't know the answer. I just want to put that on the record so that you guys can look into that. And also, I second everything that Terry Gossett and CPR recommended. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Zoe Kirsten Tucker to be followed by Leonard Warren.
Good afternoon. My name is Zoe Kirsten Tucker. I'm a resident of Moss Beach, excuse me. 10 years ago, I had the pleasure of serving as a spokesperson for the Yes on Measure T campaign, which is a Devil's Slide Tunnel campaign. As you know, 3/4 of the voters in San Mateo County approved that measure. And here, on the eve of the groundbreaking of the tunnel, I'm hoping that you will put this last piece into place and redesignate and rezone the Caltrans right-of-way as open space, those public lands, so that we can ensure that the Devil's Slide Tunnel will truly be the world-class transportation solution that we've been hoping for in an environmentally sensitive area. Pardon me. Through this morning, I've heard a lot of people talk about NIMBYism and not in my backyard, and I want to provide a slightly different perspective. Through the last 10 years, I've been involved in a number of regional open space measures. I've had an opportunity to talk to many, many people in this region and have been inspired by the degree to which people, regardless of whether they live on the coast or not, view the coast as a very precious resource to them. And whenever they're asked, they vote overwhelmingly in favor of protecting those resources. So before you today, you have a number of, I think, very fair and sensible revisions for the LCP. They provide a balance between the necessary growth that we will have on the coast, we will continue to have, the really never-ending pressure to develop the coast, and also the need to protect those resources and allow that development to move at a pace that's in keeping with our infrastructure. So, I'm particularly in favor of the 1% growth limit, and I urge you to very seriously consider the reasonable recommendations put forth in the planning commission's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Warren to be followed by Catherine Slater Carter.
Leonard Warren, El Granada. Good afternoon, Mr. President, honorable members of the board. I'm, speaking as an individual, I strongly support the position of the Committee for Green Foothills. I assume that the letter that I saw, you have a copy of. To elaborate on one issue, the growth rate. With the census data showing a slight decline in county population in each of the last few years, and projections showing a continuing slight decline through at least 2050, there's simply no basis to the claim that increasing housing in the mid-coast is necessary. Since the coast side, since the coast side is a treasured recreation destination for the whole county, and indeed the whole state, it is undesirable to sacrifice this special place for short-term gain for a few. a few. If the coast side could vote, they would certainly vote to have a 1% limit as the voters of Half Moon Bay did. And I would actually encourage you to at least do an advisory vote to get the true sense rather than the people that can manage to come to a daytime meeting. This also means that because the coast side already has a huge excess of houses over jobs, there's no need, and in fact, a need not, to allow even more houses in the old bypass right-of-way, because that'll just make the imbalance worse. Also, in terms of thinking about the growth rate, you need to think about construction traffic. And it's been stated by people who have studied traffic issues that some trucks take up the equivalent road capacity of up to 10 cars. So the higher the growth rate, the less road capacity there is for the residents, the houses that they're building. So...
Leonard, thank you. Catherine Slater-Carter, to be followed by Will Carter.
Thank you, honorable board. I'm a member of the MCC, the Midcoast Community Council. We represent over 11,000 people on the coast, and the Midcoast Council endorses and supports the recommendations before you today. I went online, I looked at your vision statement that was prompted by Supervisor Hill and endorsed by four of the five members here. Of the top 10 goals, five apply directly here. Government decisions are the result of careful consideration of future impact. Rather than temporary relief, land use decisions consider infrastructure needs as well as the impact on environment. County and local governments effectively communicate. I think you should be working more closely with Half Moon Bay, parenthetically. Residents have nearby access to green space, such as parks and recreational opportunities, and our important natural resources are preserved and enhanced through environmental stewardship. This morning, each of you received a packet from me with a cover letter with the Midcoast Community Plan in it. In fact, what you were being asked to endorse today was endorsed by a Board of Supervisors in 1978, and then again, a separate Board of Supervisors in 1982, when this was incorporated into the local coastal program. My letter details the points in this document. In short, however, land acquired for public use should remain for public use, particularly in an area critically short of infrastructure. You shouldn't be turning something that is to provide infrastructure into something that will be taking infrastructure from the infill lots. I think that's a travesty, and it's a property rights crime against the people who own the real infill lots. The 1%, there was a disaster referred to in Half Moon Bay. That's from folks trying to evade the Half Moon Bay 1% law. In fact, and the mandate of the voters, if you put in a good implementation plan, it won't be a problem. And I'm going to take one more second. These letters are from citizens all over the county, delivered by Clean Water Action, who also supports the recommendations before you today.
Thank you. Will Carter? Will Carter. Scott Boyd. Scott will be followed by Dennis Doherty.
Good afternoon, honorable supervisors. I am Scott Boyd. I am president of the Montero Water and Sanitary District, and I am here today representing the district. I'm proud to represent the 5,000 people of our exceptional community. I sent you a letter yesterday. I hope you've received that. As I stated in our letter, our district is pursuing all available means for acquiring water for our district. This is based on work that was started in a joint study with the Department of Water Resources, the state agency back in 99, formalized in 99, and laid out the entire range of possibilities for water for our community. But let's not gloss over the facts. It was stated earlier that our district is going to do what we can to supply the water. But the fact of the matter is, we've been in a moratorium since the late '70s. That's a fact. We are looking for water. We have found some water, but keep in mind, we have a 220-gallon-a-minute steady state deficit for our existing users that we are trying to fill first. And we have all these people on wells, some of them failing. That's something else that we have to take care of. We are looking for water, but until water is found and water is proven and water is permitted to put into production, talk about us providing water for anybody who needs it is really just speculation and kind of reckless. Many things are possible, not all are affordable and not all are wise. You are conducting an aquifer study right now. Build-out numbers can be based on anecdote or they can be based on actual available resources. I urge you again to collaborate with the agency that's doing the actual in-ground water exploration and study. We are drilling wells. We are gathering test data and strengthening the basis of our reports to know where water actually is and what we can actually pump. Our district has made itself available to participate by sharing with you with our wells and our data for your study. I am available to discuss any of this with you at any time in detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dennis Doherty will be followed by Stephen Mello.
My name is Dennis Doherty. I live in Moss Beach. First of all, I'd like to say that I support a continuous trail from south Half Moon Bay up through Pacifica. Next, I'd like to speak on the proposed revision to the growth cap. From 1998 to 2002, there was an average of 61 residential units built in the mid-coast. And at 61 to build out, it would go to 2050 until we hit build out. That's 45 years from now. This graph up here, our illustration, represents a neighborhood in Algrenada of 100 lots. The 62 or 61 per year represents 60 or 1% of build-out, which is 6,200. And the reason I show this up here is to make that more understandable in the sense that this is 100 lots. What we're currently building out at right now, at average, is only one lot per every 100 lots. People talk about runaway growth. That is a very small amount of impact. If you talk about numbers, 125 or 61, seems like a lot. The second home up there, so the two together represent 2% of build-out. That 2% is the 125. The 125 cap is only 2% of build-out. So what I ask you today is to keep the status quo because it is already low, and we are already only building out at a very low rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Mello, will be followed by Ronnie Mello.
Hello, my name is Steve Mello, and I'm a lifelong resident of the coast side. I live in Montero, and I built a house there about three years ago, and I think there's already too many roadblocks, and I'm for the status quo. And I don't think that's right, that you own your own property and pay taxes on it, and it takes you two years plus to build a house on it and stuff, and it's like you don't even own it. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ronnie Mello, to be followed by Greg Jamison.
Hello, my name's Ronnie. I'm 22 years old. My parents came here about 30 years ago to Half Moon Bay, and they were able to build a house. My brother built a house, and I'm going to try to build a house. But if these restrictions go up, it's going to be really tough. Half Moon Bay, I already can't because it's too expensive, and I'm shooting for the coast I want to build one, and if this goes through and you can only do 1%, I think it's going to take a long time. Property values are going to go up, and I'm not going to be able to afford it. And that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Greg Jamison. Rich Mercurio. Paul Alvarez, or Paul from Lafayette? No.
David Beaumont. Thank you, supervisors, for taking detail attention to this very important matter. It's important to remind ourselves as to why we're even here at this juncture, why we're discussing 1% growth. And that is for two reasons. Because of infrastructure, specifically traffic and water. With regard to water, there is right now a bit proffered water from North Coast County Water District to Montero Water and Sanitary, for Montero and Moss Beach. Caltrans has said this is the time to begin the permitting process to introduce the tunnel for supply of the water. They have reserved Hachachee Water, which their council has stated proffered again to Montero Water and Sanitary. With regard to Algrenada, the implementation of Phase 2 of the Crystal Stings Project is now viewed by the county as the time to begin. So water is not an issue if we work towards achieving that. With regard to traffic, both the Coastal Act and the LCP both state that four lanes is illegal between double slide and south of Half Moon Bay. So those issues, if the board was to work together with districts in implementing those, there would be no infrastructure issues. I want to say a very important point with regard to any reduction to 1%. Workforce housing is what is going to be implemented more and more in the Bay Area in the coming future, and there is many such opportunities available on the coast. And in particular, the area of the double slide, excuse me, of the Caltrans right-of-way would be a prime opportunity for the county at zero-cost land, for land that's already zoned, general plan, by the general plan and zoned, for residential medium-density housing to create genuine affordable housing on the coast. And despite what others have said to you today, there is a very ardent need for affordable housing. Lastly, I ask you that you continue that and look at that more closely, as some measures will be brought to you by different organizations.
Thank you. Our next speaker was to be Beverly Bryant. She notified me that she would not be staying. She's with the Home Builders Association and is sending a letter. That will bring us to Paul McGregor. Paul will be followed by Don Johnson.
Paul McGregor, resident of Sematell County, lifetime coast side resident for 25 years. I'm here to say, leave the yearly build-out number at status quo. To change that limit to 125, less than 125 units per year, would create a frenzy of new permit applications. Take Half Moon Bay, for example. Their system incorporates a beauty contest approach. This system has created a process that has encouraged people to lie and cheat in order to achieve getting a building permit. Example, I'm going to live in my house. A lot of people down there that aren't doing that. If you're going to emulate what Half Moon Bay is doing, how is the planning department going to deal with it? How are you going to keep staff on board? Who's going to enforce these new rules? Your planning department right now is already understaffed, overworked. How will they be able to handle the new influx of applications that will come in? Has anyone anticipated what will happen? Your planning department is in gridlock right now. The number of units that will come in in such a rush will dissipate anybody that's good in there. You guys have a problem in there right now, and you need to fix it. As far as the roads go, I am in full agreement that Highway 1 and 92 need to be addressed to take care of pedestrians, bicyclists, and people driving to and from work. And I would suggest that you really do get on board and start looking at the road situation so we don't have this 20 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Johnson will be followed by Barbara Hall.
Honorable supervisors, I'm Don Johnson. I live in Montero, and I'd like to thank you for the extraordinary generosity with your time to give this full consideration. In fact, that seems to characterize this whole process, from the many meetings we had at nights on the coast where people would come and meet it, come and see it, the Planning Commission, and then here. And I think the result of that, it hasn't been arbitrary recommendations, but fairly well-thought-out ones. I can't say that it should be 1% with exceptions or 52 with no exceptions, but I do think that it's fairly clear that having 125 units a year, where it may have made sense 20 years ago when it was first put in place or before that, it doesn't make much sense anymore. We're approaching build-out. This is the time to keep steady or taper off. It's not the time to double your speed. A lot of the arguments put forward by those who want no caps at all just don't seem to make a lot of sense. First, we're told, don't let infrastructure be a planning device, okay? And then we're saying, don't worry about planning because the infrastructure will take care of it. It's one or the other. I suggest that you plan. I think that's a better idea. Another, we're also told, if we're only allowed more building, housing prices would go down. Well, the LCP allows 125 now. We don't have a lot of low-cost housing. The housing that you're seeing, because of the way the free market works, is if a lot costs $300,000, you're not going to put a $450,000 townhouse on it. That's the way it is. You know, I haven't heard any promises for people come and saying, if you just give me an extra 10 myself, I'll build low-cost housing. I don't think I've heard that one. And then, but if it's, and then on the other hand, we hear, well, it's already so hard and expensive to build that growth limits don't really make any difference anyway. I think the arguments are just contradictory, and I urge you to go with the Planning Commission recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Hall. Burt Hamel, I believe? Anybody named Burt? Okay, thank you. Paul Perkovic will be our last speaker.
Good afternoon, President Gordon and members of the board. My name is Paul Perkovic. I live in Montero. I'm going to be speaking on my own behalf. First, I'd like to address the issue of the surplus Caltrans property that was a former bypass right-of-way. I strongly support the Planning Commission recommendation there. It is a little bit contradictory for folks to come in and argue that those should be brought in as additional potential residential lots, and at the same time argue that there's going to be this conflict between the owners of undeveloped lots for a limited number of building permits each year. If that property is held in reserve after all of the other infill lots have been developed, then if it's still necessary and the infrastructure can support additional residential uses, that would be an appropriate time to rezone those for residential use. And that would cut down on competition for a limited development capacity now. You'll never be able to change the land use planning or zoning of that if it's in private ownership, but right now it's in public ownership. So this is your golden opportunity. Take advantage of it. Secondly, several people have spoken about how this whole process is like a big jigsaw puzzle and all the pieces in it relate. The land use designation changed, open space, is no problem. The zoning map changed, community open space conservation district, would be a problem unless your board adopts the Planning Commission's recommendation for that zoning district. As you know, some people have asked that residential uses remain available for the COSC zoning district. If your board chooses to do that, then COSC would not be the most appropriate zoning designation for the double slide bypass area, but perhaps RMCC, which has a lower density, would be most appropriate. Third, I'd like to talk to the, speak about the build-out rate. When Supervisor Tissier joined her board, she came out to visit the Midcoast Community Council, and I'll save that for a future meeting.
Thank you. I would like to get a motion to close the public hearing.
Close.
I think that was unanimous. And I get to hear a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Let me talk briefly about process at this point so we can get into this. What we have done at the last two hearings on these matters is, at this point, we have gone back and gone through each of the recommendations from the Planning Commission and either taken action for tentative approval or deferred those items for further discussion or to seek additional information before making decisions. We are scheduled, originally scheduled, to have a public meeting, hearing on the local coastal plan on April 26. I met a week ago with staff, the planning department, to talk about kind of where we were in this process. I have been informed that it's going to be difficult, particularly if there are items that we today ask for additional information to be sought, for the staff to be prepared and to have material back to us on April 26 in a way that would, the original concept was to try to wrap this up. There was also some discussion at that meeting with staff about, you know, the need, perhaps before we take final action, to have some additional consultation with the Coastal Commission. We've received numerous letters from them on these items. And then, the final part of that discussion with staff was a suggestion that I made, which is that perhaps if we're not ready... is that perhaps if we're not ready to deal with the detail on April 26, maybe there's an opportunity for us to take a step back at that meeting and to take a look at kind of a broader picture and to allow this board to engage some discussion, in some discussion about, you know, essentially, what is our vision for the midcoast? What do we think is the appropriate level of development in broad terms? What do we think are appropriate issues around the infrastructure and how should we deal with those? What are the appropriate decisions that ought to be made about support or lack of support for commercial activity? And how much of that do we want to see? So in a sense, move from kind of the, what sometimes feels as we deal with each of these issues at kind of a micro level to back up to a little higher view at a macro level. If the board could then find some consensus on some of these broad visions, the staff then could work to figure out how to fit these items that we've, the specific items, back into that vision in a way that might comprehensively tie this together and bring us to some conclusion. So the, I throw that out as a suggestion and as a comment on process, and if we want, we can come back to that if you would prefer to take a period of time and go through the items that were presented today, depending on what your pleasure is.
Mr. President, I think that makes sense to have that broader discussion as to what our vision is for the coast before we get involved in the more detailed discussion. So I would support that. And I think it's important also that when we do hear back from staff, that, and perhaps this should be during the broader discussion, we should hear a more detailed report as to what pace growth can be sustained by the current infrastructure and the anticipated infrastructure. I think we need more information on that, and perhaps that can be part of that broader discussion. We need that information before I think we can get to any of this, any of the detail.
Supervisor Hillman, Supervisor Jacobson.
I agree with Supervisor Church, and I think it's important that we look at that vision and really take into consideration, because I heard some information today about, you know, the Transportation Authority or funding going to Highway 92 and changes that could be implemented over time. Well, how will that affect the ability to move more people? And will that have some effect positively on the level of service that we, that we see today? And, you know, the Coastal Commission, I think the letter that we received regarding for this meeting, we just received this morning. So it's kind of difficult to look at some of the issues that were raised today and put them in the proper context of what their concerns are relative to the Local Coastal Act, or the Coastal Act. So I think it's important, and I certainly, I really support the idea of sitting down and discussing kind of that vision, taking into consideration when this goes to staff, some of the conclusions that we've already come to and some of the recommendations that the Planning Commission, and the recommendations that the Planning Commission have made, and fit that all together into some format. So I think it's a great idea.
Supervisor Jacobson.
I concur. I think it's important for us to have, have the opportunity to look at this from a broader view, because right now, the level of detail that we're getting feels a lot like pieces of a puzzle. So I think it will be very helpful for us to be able to get a good picture, and then we can see a better, how they all fit together, taking into consideration the information we're getting back, some of the information we're hearing from, and letters and communications we're getting from you, and then being able to have a conversation, be able to see how we think it should fit. And also identifying exactly how we might be able to accomplish some of the things around transportation and the infrastructure, because those are very, very serious issues. And we want, and we do care about the decisions that we make. So it's going to be important for us to really have an opportunity to be very thoughtful and thorough on all of our considerations.
Maybe I'm going to look at it a little bit more selfishly. For me, I haven't had the opportunity to really explore the coast side as best I'd like to prior to making this kind of decision. I've been offered tours from many different groups. And for me, if we could postpone this and sort of look at our vision, it also will give me some time to go spend some more time on the coast side, because I'll be honest, when I look at some of these maps and we talk about some of these issues, it is a bit overwhelming. So I think it will, one, give us all a chance to determine what our vision is, but also, I think, give me a little time, since a lot of my orientation has been in other areas, and it'd be helpful for me as at least one member of this board to really understand more of the coast side, to make what I would think would be an educated decision versus a semi-educated decision. So I do appreciate your thoughts on that, Mr. President, and I agree with you. I think it'd be nice to figure out where we're going, and then that way, decisions we make down the road will fit in line. So I appreciate, hopefully, that time to get my education on this as well. Thank you.
Supervisor Church.
And, Mr. President, I think it's important when staff comes back that they have had further communication perhaps with the sewer and water districts. Mr. Boyd was kind enough to be here today. I appreciate that. And Mr. Michelson was here, and I think that we need to have a full understanding as to what plans the water districts have, what steps they plan on taking to find additional sources before we can make these decisions. I think with all that information, we'll be in a better position to make these decisions. We need, I think, perhaps to improve our communication with the various districts.
Let me suggest that, as I'm hearing some support for the process I suggested here, that one thing we probably should do is quickly go through the items for today. If there are any that we want to take action on, fine, but the key point for this really is to go through to see if there are additional questions or issues that you want staff to research on these areas, as we've done in the past, so that we give them that feedback. So let me do that, and then we'll come back and conclude this discussion of the next steps of the process. The first here has to do with the 1% limit. I'm wondering, it would seem to me that it's difficult to make any decision on this based on our discussion about infrastructure and other issues, but are there any questions or issues that folks want staff to explore?
I have, I have one question, and that is the feasibility of exempting units designed for people with disabilities or special needs. I think we heard some compelling testimony here today in support of such an exemption, and without hearing anything further, I think I'd be inclined to support that, but I'd like to hear staff's reaction.
And how that could be incorporated into the changes that you're, when it comes back.
Right.
I guess the one question I have in this regard is, part of this also talks about that one unit is essentially equals one building permit, so that if you're building a, you know, a four-unit apartment, that's four units, four residential units out of whatever the limit that exists. I'd like to know historically, you know, what we've done in that regard and what, you know, what is the extent of multiple, how many projects have come forward over the last 10 years that are multiple family, that I guess under our existing rules would have counted as one, but would have counted differently? And just to get a sense of kind of what the pattern has been.
And I had asked County Council, and I spoke with Mary yesterday on the issue, the question that was raised before, on the requirement, it's kind of the chicken and the egg idea of whether the special districts are required to meet the infrastructure needs of whatever planning goals that we establish, or is it the other way around, and that they can establish whatever infrastructure supply that they choose, and then we are limited to our development based on that? And so, Mary, do you know when that report would be, that analysis or that legal question could be answered?
We can certainly have it by the 26th, and we can try to get it to you sooner than that, as soon as Tom gets back and we have a chance to finalize. We've been working on the issue, but we just haven't been able to finalize it at this point.
That'd be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. If there's nothing else on the build-out number, the second issue is the Caltrans Devil's Slide bypass property. One issue that I have on this one is that there is, I'm aware, one, and I think there's just one, but I'd like to have staff verify this, one residential property where there is a house existing on these lands, and people have been long-term renters of that property. And my understanding, and I guess there's two questions, one for County Council, my understanding is that these individuals, under state rules, would be eligible, if the property is available for residential use, to actually purchase that from Caltrans if it's declared surplus. I'd like to get that explored. I think these people have been 15, 20 years in this home. And I'd like to also make sure, from the planning end, that there are, you know, no other individuals in this circumstance. I don't believe there are, but I'd like to verify that before we would take some action.
Mr. President, I'd like to also ask the question, I think it sort of goes where you're going, depending on how that plays out with the person that is renting that particular property, how, what is the succession for those that have the first right of refusal for that property after, whether it applies to them, or if not, how does it go towards government agencies and does it, since it's a government property?
The, I guess the other question I have is, I'd like, when we hear back on this item, have clarification from staff about the level of communication we've had with Caltrans and, you know, where are they on this issue? I'm surprised that with all the notification we've done, we, you know, heard from a lot of other folks, but we haven't heard a thing from Caltrans, and we're talking about making a significant change to an awful lot of property that they presently own. Hopefully, they're filling the potholes out on the roads of 101. And that raises the question that Pellegrini raised about the eminent domain issue and whether we have a, or there is an obligation somewhere legal or to go back to those people and make some provisions for them. And maybe this is a LAFCO question that Mr. Barron raised about 2.14A and 2.14B in the boundaries of the districts, and how those, you know, redrafting the boundaries to match the service areas. That's kind of an interesting one that I thought, and I don't know if that's something that LAFCO would deal with, or if we could, but maybe we could get an answer to that question, too, please. County Council would work on that one, and if necessary, engage a LAFCO in a possible response, too. Third issue is the Highway One pedestrian improvements. Any issues, questions on this one?
Mr. Bacon, sorry about that. Just come here.
The fourth was the updating the local coastal trail policies. Any questions for staff on those?
Is that something we can just move forward with and add to?
I guess the one, on the trail, the one issue I had, there was, I know, testimony from, I believe, the Half Moon Bay Chamber of Commerce. The map, George, that you showed us on the coastal conservancy trail designations, I'm not clear that that, where it goes from, you know, like Princeton, where does that line go to Half Moon Bay? And are we talking about, you know, trail, coastal trail designation for the entire midcoast from Half Moon Bay city limits north, or is there a part of it that's not included for some reason?
I'm sorry. In response, those maps I secured from Coastal Commission, excuse me, Coastal Conservancy staff last year, they were, it's part of a continuous set of maps. I chose my presentation just one segment, and I will contact them and see, and see if Coastal Conservancy has more updated maps and acquire the maps that include the entire midcoast at Half Moon Bay, so I can show you those.
Yeah. Personally, if we're going to, you know, do this coastal trail designation, I want to make sure we cover the entire area and haven't left something out.
Right.
And I concur with that, because that was one of my concerns. I would love to see all of them.
Okay. I will secure those.
We won't do that one yet. We won't. Okay. Item number five for today was LCP tasks assigned to the county. Are there any questions that? Is there any controversy over these? Well, I get, I have a question, though. It says we're going to, the staff will reestablish the Coastal Access Acquisition and Development Fund as one of the tasks. I'm not sure I know what that fund is, and where does the money come from and where does it go to?
Or do we have anything on that?
I'll explain that as best I can, and also I'll add to it the question of why it has to be reestablished, what happened to it? Okay, we have a set of, in our LCP, we have a set of shoreline access policies, and for any proposed development that's located between the first public road and the sea, the applicant has to provide some form of shoreline access. Depending on the scale of the project, put this way, the magnitude of the project or its extent of development determines what type of access is provided. If it's a large project, it could be the actual dedication and development of a trail. If it's a medium-sized project, it could be actual dedication of a trail but not development. If it's a small-sized project, usually it's the payment of an in-lu fee for use, that the county would use for, to provide coastal access elsewhere. We had collected in-lu fees for small-sized projects, like a house that's on, near the coastline, and we had amassed, I don't have the number now, but there was a significant about a buddy, and the Park and Recreation Division used all of the money that was in that fund in the late '90s, I think, as part of their accepting of offers to dedicate, part of a coastal access trails program. We never reestablished that fund. So this is for us to reestablish the fund. But basically, it's the accumulation of monies that are dedicated as in-lu fees to the county, paid as in-lu fees to the county for small-scale development to cover their coastal access obligation.
Sounds good. Any further questions or issues on those LCP tasks? Folks are fairly comfortable with those?
I think so. Should we move tentative approval of those?
That would be fine. I have, yep. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, tentative approval of the LCP tasks assigned to the county. These are items 5A through to E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved tentatively. Item six is the, relates to codifying coastal act sections as LCP policy, and it's recommended that we not do this. And, but it also says a new LCP policy to deal with resolution of policy conflicts. Any issues or question on this?
I think it's a good idea. I concur with the recommendation of number B to enact a new policy.
I'm going to accept that as a motion for tentative approval. I found a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number seven is, has to do with policy conflicts and ambiguous provisions that, any questions or issues on these?
No, and I'm not sure where this question I'm going to ask comes in, and I'm not sure it's there, but there was a question by Ms. Pellegrini, or a comment, that the board needs to respond to the, I'm not sure if I quite understood it, but the comments that come to our board, that we need to respond back to those comments, almost like you do with an EIR, is that correct? I don't, I didn't quite follow the code that she was referring to.
I, I'm not familiar with the code that she's referring to. It's been my understanding, we are following the process that we need to do. George and I commented briefly, I think he thought perhaps that's when the Coastal Commission takes action, that the commission needs to make that referral. What we'll need to do is, is research the code of regulations and make sure we are doing the process. If that is required, we'll bring it back to you.
And maybe could I ask a question? I was just going to say, if Mr. Pellegrini could share with us what code she was referring to, to make sure we're on the same page.
And I actually referred a member of the public to that code when he had questions about public participation. These are, these are codes, this is part of the California Code of Regulations that applies to coastal, to the Coastal Commission, and that's my understanding, that it doesn't, I don't think it extends to local agencies. I think these are Coastal Commission administrative regulations.
Well, we'll, our attorneys will find out.
Thank you.
And make sure. So any, think further on the item seven, policy conflicts, ambiguous provisions? We're okay on that one? We need a motion for tentative approval? Do we need a motion for tentative approval?
I'll move.
A motion is, motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. And item number eight is the Midcoast Design Review Glossary. This is the last item for today. Any issues with this? Didn't hear any testimony on it.
I'll move tentative approval.
Second.
Motion is second for tentative approval of the Midcoast Design Review Glossary. All those in favor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. President, could we go back to number one? I have a few more comments on that.
Sure, sure.
Getting back again, there were some comments made by Mr. Peck on the Big Way Project to combine the project with some commercial uses to get priority water use, and I think that's an interesting idea, and I'd like to hear back from staff on that issue, if that's feasible. Another comment was made, I think it was by Ms. Carey regarding teardowns and rebuilds. Would those be included as part of whatever cap we set, or would they be exempt? I'd like to hear back from staff as to what their recommendation would be. There were also some comments about, with the limitation at 1 percent, that there would be a frenzy of new permits that would be sought, and that that may create a workload backlog with staff, and I'd like to get staff's thoughts on that, as to whether or not that is a concern to them. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions that folks have for staff? Okay. Let me go back then, and the suggestion is that we would hold a meeting on the 26th, as announced. The purpose for that meeting would then be for the board to have some discussion about, kind of, the broader vision. And I'm going to suggest that the President and Vice President of the Board work with staff to prepare some kind of a document for us to look at, that gives us a starting point with some principles or assumptions, policies, I'm not sure what the appropriate word is, as a way to start, and also to work with staff to take a look at what might be an appropriate revised timeline for further consideration and moving towards eventual approval and adoption. Is that acceptable?
So would this, would that portion of our discussion be more in the form of a study session?
Well, it's noticed as a public hearing, so what we would have to do is, I think, we'd have to have some, you know, there'll be an opportunity for the board to discuss, but there'd also be an opportunity, would have to be provided for some public comment on that. But I think, but I think what we want to, want to try to achieve is a maximum opportunity for the board, you know, to have time to talk about these issues and to get a sense of, you know, where are we on some of these broad principles? All right, is there anything further for today on these matters? We're going to adjourn in just a second. Earlier, we did some adjournments in memory, and one that we missed that I think is appropriate to do as we close today would be that we adjourn this portion of our meeting in memory of Ron Cialino. Ron was a radiologist at St. Mary's in San Francisco. He is the father of Karen Wilson, and our sympathies go to Karen and to Arlene and others in the family on the passing of Ron Cialino. With that, we will adjourn this meeting.